Good evening. I'd like to call this town council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I know. That's gonna be a good meeting. Oops. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observance of Thanksgiving. The Merrimack Transfer Station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and will be open normal hours on Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There are two scheduled meetings in December for the town council, both of them here at 7:00 p.m. and in the Matthew Thornton Room. Those two dates are Thursday, December 7th, and Thursday, December 21st. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to remind everybody, the winter parking ban is in effect until April 15th. There is no parking on public roads between the hours 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. from now until April 15th. The Merrimack Police Department is collecting unwrapped toys for Mighty Max's Mega Toy Drive to benefit the patients of the Jimmy Fund Clinic and the Boston Children's Hospital until November 30th. If you'd like to donate, please go to the police station in the drop box and drop an unwrapped toy off, or you can visit MightyMaxToyDrive.com for more information. Please help support the Town of Merrimack's food drive to support local food pantries this holiday season. Drop boxes have been placed at the police station, the highway garage, both the lower and upper town hall building, and the library. Donations will be accepted through January 1st. The Merrimack Parks and Rec Department is pleased to invite you to join us for the 24th Annual Holiday Parade for Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony, which will be held on Sunday, December 3rd. The annual parade kicks off at 3:00 p.m. from the Common Shopping Plaza near Tractor Supply. The theme this year is "A Whoville Christmas." The tree lighting ceremony will commence immediately after the parade ends and will be held at the Abbey Griffin Park Bandstand at approximately 3:45. For more information or to enter a vote into the parade, please contact Parks and Rec at 882-1046. And lastly, December tax bills have been mailed and are due on December 15th.
Boo.
That's why I saved it for last. Property owners who have not received their tax bills by tomorrow, please contact the tax collector's office for a duplicate bill. I know I received mine today in the mail, so...
Yeah, yesterday was G-Day.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. PFOA update. There are no updates since the joint meeting that we held with the school board from two days ago, so nothing new since then. Highway Garage Project update. There is going to be a presentation this evening, so I'm assuming there's nothing you want to, Jackie or Finley, you want to say prior to, or is there?
No.
Okay.
I didn't know.
Okay. Comments from the press or public?
Did I miss the PFOA update?
Yes, I did say something about it.
I apologize.
Can you wait until after?
I'd be happy to.
Say it again.
Oh, no, you can. Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Wendy, she's already...
Go right ahead, just say your name and address, please.
Sure. Wendy Thomas at Ten Waukeg Falls. This is just an update on the testing of our private well. On Monday, November 6th, the state came to our house to retest our well water for carcinogenic PFOAs and PFOS before the filter. We had had it done privately and the water had been tested prior to an activated charcoal system, so they came and took a raw sample. The state is also testing for MTBE, which is an additive to gasoline. That was the first time I had heard that that's an issue with our water. Animal studies suggest drinking water with high levels of MTBE may cause stomach irritation, liver and kidney damage, and nervous system effects. An increase in liver and kidney cancer was found in rats and mice breathing high levels of MTBE or orally consuming high concentrations of the chemical. Because of the animal studies on MTBE, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services considers it a possible human carcinogen. That's at least two, at least two big carcinogenic substances that are currently in our water, the water that we use to drink, cook, to bathe in, and to swim in. Here's a reminder that not only are we five miles from St. Cobain, but we are also two streets behind the town garage where the gas pumps are. To say I am concerned about this situation is an understatement. In both situations, these are man-made chemicals that are in our water due to negligence. These contaminants have been introduced to our water by people and companies who haven't followed proper disposal guidelines. If our well tests over 70 parts per trillion for total PFOAs, we will be told that our water is too dangerous to drink, and we will be supplied bottled water by the state. If there are any MTBEs in our water, we will be told that our water is too dangerous to drink, and we will be supplied bottled water by the state. This is bad, this is very bad. The Merrimack contaminated drinking water situation must be considered an immediate, all hands-on-deck situation by all elected officials. Our town and its residents' health is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Hi. Catherine Hodge, 44 Belmont Drive, Merrimack. I was here for the joint committee meeting on Tuesday. But first, I wanted to say, since living in Merrimack, I've been here since 2012, never had any health issues. I'm kind of like the poster child for health issues with our group. I'm very pleased to say on Wednesday I am cancer-free again for the second time in less than one year total. So while that's great news for me, what am I up against next? So, I just wanted to get that on record. So, at the joint school board-town council meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, 2017, MVD stated that they are testing Merrimack Town Water for not only PFOA, PFOS, but many other chemicals in the same class that are present and of a concern to them, yet they're not posting any results. The last test results that are posted are on the DES page, and they're from MVD, and they're from August 24th of this year. And all the other chemicals that they stated once again that are a major concern to them, they're not posted. As I re-watch the joint meeting at about 39 minutes, 29 seconds, and Lon Woods made a statement, "Nothing has changed with the MVD since 1955." He also stated that, "At this juncture in history, if things need to change, the town will let them know," meaning will let MVD know, "or the residents, customers, will let MVD know when things need to change." So guess what? Things need to change. At this time, we think it would be beneficial to consider disbanding the MVD and allowing the Town of Merrimack to proceed with moving forward, as it will allow more of a democratic process for the residents' voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Ellen, 16 French Court. I just want to thank you for your time and attention. It's been a long year. I know you guys didn't sign on for this. I just want to talk briefly about something that I wanted to call to your attention in the health area. I've had a couple of meetings with some of my colleagues with DHHS over the last two months, and we've been addressing some of the concerns and things that we need as a community and what the shortcomings are. They were wonderful, they really listened to us well. One of the things that they had said is, "We do not have a state toxicologist," which I was aware of. It's very important to have this because residents who have had blood testing recently, who have called the state for more information, have been given the Poison Center's 1-800 number, and they have not been of help, from what I've heard. So that's one piece. The other one is, there's an agency called, the agency, let's see if I can get it right, ATSDR Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, there it is. They are under the CDC, and they are a federal government entity in New Hampshire. You know we're not endless, you know, we don't have pockets full of cash here, and DHHS has a lot of jobs they have to do. So our federal partners are really, really important to us. So I found out that in August of 2016, that DHHS had made a request on our behalf for what's called a health consultation. And what that is, is like our friends over at Pease, when they had 1,576 people receive blood testing, they had the serum results that were above national average, they qualified for this health consultation, they got it. It's been a long process for them. It's been a couple of years of working with a representative from ATSDR amongst other people. Merrimack had that request go in for Southern New Hampshire by DHHS, August 2016, so I asked DHHS what the follow-up was on that. They said they hadn't really heard anything, and this year has been a challenging year for some federal relationships, they weren't so surprised by that. So I went home and I called our rep in Boston, Tara Summers is her name, and she said she needed to check with her headquarters in Atlanta, which she did, got back to me the end of that week, third week in September or so. The answer there was, they prepared a first draft of the request, they sent it in last year, well over a year ago in a timely manner, and hadn't heard anything. So I suggested it was time perhaps to check on that. Could they please do that? She did so, she got back to me about a week later, and she stated that it was very stalled out, they were unable to advocate for their own needs at this point, and she would see what she could do to move that along. I told her I'd check back. Checked back Monday via email. She said she was going to check back in with Atlanta to see what the timeline was. So what we can expect from that is, if we can push that along, I'm asking that maybe some of you folks keep that in mind and you help advocate to our local reps. I've reached out this morning with an email to some of our senators in Washington that represent the state to make them aware of this issue, and some pushing is needed. What I know is, a lot of pushing is needed. So I was told by ATSDR that the process would be, if this draft request absolutely would be approved, because that's their job, that's what they do typically. If you read their description, it states, "Community support and feasibility studies" and all kinds of good stuff that we need. So they would then move into a public comment session, and they would contact you and contact the citizens group and put it in the papers, and people would give some commentary on this. Then they would go into some design of feasibility and what they would recommend for support for us, and that would go through probably a pretty lengthy process, but nonetheless, it would be pretty much what we need. So they did make it clear that when they got to the end and they made their recommendations, because my question to them was, "What happens at the 11th hour? Are you going to be able to fund that?" Big hesitation on their behalf, and finally they said, "That is a problem, and they're unable to advocate for their own funding at this point, and they do anticipate, as of right now, that being a problem." So I wanted you to be aware of that, first of all, that that's something that we are advocating for, because I think our voices have been really important. You know, that I'm finding is making a big difference. And I also want to leave with you this publication that just came out this week. It is just entitled, "Proposal for Coordinated Health Research in PFAS Contaminated Communities in the United States." It's a collaborative effort with scientists, public health officials, officials and physicians, and the appendix of the signatures is here. It's very impressive. The folks that you will see on this list are the folks who have done, we hear all the time, you know, "There's not enough research, there's not enough information." These are the folks that have done the best research to date, and this is a really good document that I'll just leave here, or I'll hand to Bill, and if you guys at your leisure want to take a look at this, I think it's very, very helpful to Merrimack. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bill, just to let you know, I had already made a comment that there were no updates since the Tuesday meeting, joint meeting. Okay?
Okay. The update that I had is kind of indirectly related to it.
Go right ahead.
As you all know, I'm a member of the, the governor's representative to the Drinking Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission, which is a statewide commission, and on November 2nd, the commission approved the Merrimack Village District's application for a $1.3 million loan to improve the infrastructure to the pumping infrastructure at the Turkey Hill Pumping Station here in town. So what that means is that $1.3 million is being made available in the form of a loan out of the trust fund that was created, now goes before the executive council, I believe, not in December but in January. Pending executive council approval, that would be presented to the village district voters for their approval at the annual meeting in March. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. I was very happy to support that, along with Chris Christensen, who is state rep and the vice chair of the commission, and Bernie Russo, who is a Merrimack resident and is also vice president over at Penachuck. So we had some significant Merrimack residents on that commission to advocate for this specific project, and I'm very happy to report that it favorably reported out of the commission. So I just wanted to pass that along to all of you from an informational piece.
Thank you very much.
Because that was the staff that's given afterwards, can I say something else?
Yes, you may, just reintroduce yourself, that's all.
Sure, Wendy Thomas, Ten Waukeg Falls. Just clarification, that project and the money that's being allocated to the MVD, does that, is that solely for pumping, or does that include any kind of filtration?
It's pumping.
Just pumping? Okay, thank you.
Actually Wendy, to my knowledge, it's just pumping, to my knowledge.
I believe it is too, from what I understand. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, saying that. Okay, there's going to be some shifting of some of the topics here, and hopefully we'll keep it straight. But we are going to be doing the recognitions as planned. After that, I'll explain how we're going to modify it. Okay, recognition of town employee leaving employment. The town council will present a recognition one, Ward to Dispatcher 3, Michael A. Piccolo. Ah, okay. And recognition of more than 11 years of service to the Town of Merrimack Police Department. So come on up here.
You're too young to retire. And would you like to say a few words first? And then I'll read them.
I think you know me better than that. Of course I'd like to say a few words. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, Paul. Thank you for allowing us to congratulate Mike for a great career at the Merrimack Police Department. Really briefly, you know, I don't know if any of you know what it takes to be an emergency dispatcher, but you have to multitask. You have to answer the telephone, you have to answer the fire department, the police department, the person who's at the window asking for help, and the person who's walking into dispatch needing a piece of paper. And everybody wants everything they need immediately. So in order to do that, Mike actually has mastered the multitasking. So Mike is a great dispatcher, he is one of the few people that we can always count on, or could always count on, because now we're sad that you're gone, could always count on to be the person to make sure that they got everything done when it needed to be done and prioritize it. So Mike, we just want to say, for the almost 12 years that you worked with the Merrimack Police Department, thank you very much. Thank you to your family for allowing, for all the crazy shifts, the holidays, the nights, the weekends, the overnight shifts. We really appreciate that you shared him with us, and we hope that everything you do from this point on, you do as well as you did for us. So thank you.
Counselor Peter Albut has requested to say a few words as well.
I just wanted to say something to Mike. I had the pleasure of working with Mike at the PD, and Mike worked, we worked directly together in the Communications Division. I watched this guy, I watched his young family grow, it's a beautiful family, and the hard work he put in, and some of the most stressful situations that I reviewed, you listen to some of those calls that these guys handle, because we evaluate them, and it's amazing some of the work they've done, and Mike, Mike himself, his professionalism and so forth, under very stressful conditions. Mike, we're going to miss you.
You're not going to miss that terrible schedule, are you? No. You'll miss the people, but not the schedule. Okay, this is the plaque that Michael's going to be receiving. "In recognition of the dedicated service you have given during your employment with the Communications Division of the Town of Merrimack Police Department for more than 11 years. Your dedication and devotion have had a valuable effect on the Town of Merrimack, and we wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, November 5th, 2016 to November 11th, 2017, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and Town Manager." Well, I tried to backtrack. Well, whatever you do in the future, I know you must be a cool cucumber, because in circumstances that I can only imagine, you have to be able to be cool, decisive, be able to make decisions inappropriate ones to save people's lives in an emergency, so whatever you do, I wish you all the best. And apparently Chief Curry has given me the high sign, because he wants to say something. We're never going to get out of here with all of you.
Some of the things that dispatchers do that, you know, we recognize at the fire department is, we truly understand that a dispatcher is the actual first responder. Okay? When an emergency call comes in, if it's not to 911, it goes to our dispatchers locally, and they handle the emergency, talking one-on-one with the people that are having the emergency. And what we try to do, as I try to instill in most people, what these guys are doing there is they're trying to make the worst day that that victim is having better on the phone, which is a trying event. Okay? I dealt with Mike a lot of times on many building fires, multi-alarm structure fires. I'm sorry, I can be really demanding at times. Okay? I mean, really, I needed yesterday because the place was burning, but he's a trooper, he's come through every time for me and our crews. Thank you very much.
He apparently, he has said enough, he doesn't want to say anything more. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
We do have another plaque of appreciation, but this gentleman's not here this evening, so I'm going to read the plaque, and, well, why don't you say a few words, then I'll read it.
Very, very briefly. Jim Connolly, our other dispatcher that has left us, he's actually on the road right now on his way to Colorado to start his new retired life. He and his wife packed up and left, and we just want to say that, if Jim could ever hear this, that he is such a wonderful man, he taught us a lot, he had great stories, he was a pleasure to work with, and he certainly was a character, and to any of the public, we're sorry if he ever hung up accidentally on you.
Do you want to say anything?
I just echo her saying.
Let me read this, this is very similar as well. Presented to James Connolly, we're going to make sure he receives this, I'm not sure, we'll have to track where he is and send it out. "In recognition of the dedicated service you have given during your employment with the Communications Division of the Town of Merrimack Police Department for more than 14 years. Your dedication and devotion have had a valuable effect on the town. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, March 23rd, 2003, to November 6th, 2017." Boy, he moved fast, didn't he? "Presented by the Town Council and Town Manager." Thank you very much, Jim. Okay. Oh, thank you very much. See how they have to take care of me? Left my glasses over there. What I would like to know, is there any public here that wants to address, for public hearing, any of the chapters under review? What I would like to propose is that we move New Business Number One, Deliberation to Fill the Town Council Vacancy, to this position. So whoever's voted in will be able to sit down for the rest of the meeting. Without objection? Then let's do that. Okay, now, the instructions are as follows. We have three candidates. Their names are Tom Thornton, Paul McLaughlin, and Stephen Kozinski. They have already been interviewed by the town council. They are all here, and they are all allowed to have three minutes to introduce themselves to the public, say whatever words they would like to say, to be able to introduce who they are for the public. Then the council will deliberate and come to a vote. So I'll present in this order. Tom Thornton, come on down. You may either sit at the table or stand, whatever you're comfortable with. You've been before the council for the MYA, so...
So I'm Tom Thornton, 5 Heritage Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Current president of the MYA, been with the MYA for 13 years, was with Parks and Rec before as well. And family, three boys, married, dog. And I don't need three minutes, but that's me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Paul McLaughlin? Wherever you're comfortable, Paul.
Wanted to let the council know, Madam Chair, that I appreciate you working around my unforeseen circumstances last week, with the phone interview instead.
We did a conference call, just so the public knows.
Yes, yes. I had a unforeseen trip to Florida, which was awful, by the way. Wanted to take some time to introduce myself to the council, since I didn't get to do it in person, and also to the members of the public. My name is Paul McLaughlin. I'm a 27-year resident of the Town of Merrimack. After graduating from Merrimack High in 2008, I studied aerospace engineering at Florida Tech and mechanical engineering at UNH. I currently work in the biotech sector, manufacturing enzyme replacement therapies to treat rare diseases. I am a member of the Merrimack Rotary and currently sit on the Merrimack Planning Board. Excuse me. Being born and raised in town, I can tell you that I know the town landscape like the back of my hand. I rode bikes, I rode my bike on its streets, I played on its fields, I even met my wife in one of its elementary schools. This brings me to why not I only decided to stay in town, but why I decided to become involved in town government. I was raised in a good environment, and the town was a large part of that. I was also taught, growing up, that decisions are made by those who show up. I want to make sure not only my children, but the children of all current and future residents get the same opportunities that I was able to receive. So I stand here now, ready to give back to the community that raised me, to make sure the town remains a desirable place to raise a family, while at the same time continues to evolve in order to face a changing future. No matter what the decision made by the council today, I am grateful for the opportunity to serve, and will continue to look for better ways to serve the community as a whole. That's it.
Thank you very much, Paul. Stephen Kozinski? Wherever you feel comfortable, standing or sitting, it's up to you.
My name's Stephen Kozinski. I worked at the wastewater treatment plant for 23 years.
You need to go a little bit before, because I can't hear you. There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
I'd like for you to imagine a mural going all the way across that wall. And over here, it's the beginning of Merrimack, and over there is the present. Now, the hard part is, I want you to vision you in the middle of that mural. And then you look this way, and then you look that way. And then you've got to figure out which way is backwards and which way is forward. That's a metaphor. Okay, and I would like to reduce spending, I don't know if I could do it, but I would like to do that, and I would like to take the saint out of Cobain. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, first of all, I want to thank all three people who have applied for this. It's really important for people to be involved in the town, and the three of you have obviously presented your interest in helping this town grow and maintain what it has. So I'm going to open it up to the council to make comments, anybody who wants to make comments about anything, and then we'll get on to the process of voting. Would anyone like, yes, Peter?
First of all, I want to, Chairman, Madam Chair, I want to echo your... First of all, I want to, Chairman, Madam Chair, I want to echo your thoughts. I mean, we're a community of 27,000, 30,000 folks, and these three gentlemen stepped up. I'm the junior counselor here, and I'm learning that, you know, it's a big responsibility. I'm learning the job, but, you know, these three guys came up, came forward, and I appreciate that, and I respect that. I would like to say, I have known Tom Thornton many years, his family, his activity in the community. The other gentlemen, I don't know. They seem like very good gentlemen, but I know Tom has been involved in a lot of the activities and a lot of events in town. I think he has a pretty good knowledge of this, his family, his wife's family and everything. So I'd like to endorse Tom for this position. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all three of the candidates. I think that it's always amazing when people do step up how competent and valuable it is that they're willing to put up their time, realizing that this particular appointment is for a fairly short time through our toughest point, the budget season. And then it's up for reelection again in April, along with three of us here. So there's going to be four seats open in April. But to help you understand, I've been working with Paul McLaughlin for the last couple of months or so, maybe even as much as a year, on the planning board, and have been very impressed with his diligence and interest, and as he presented here, his interest in helping out the community. On the other hand, it's kind of a shame to lose him on the planning board because he wouldn't be able to stay there. So it's kind of a torn battle. But I certainly appreciate your thoughts and wish all of you the best as we go forward, and thank you so much for stepping up and being a part of our community.
And just to clarify, thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. I should have made a comment. This position is only until April, and there'll be one year left to this particular term, at which point the citizens will vote in for the last year. Okay? So this is the completion of this particular position, and then there's three. Anyone else? Jackie?
Yes, yes. I just, I'm really pleased that the quality of the candidates who have stepped forward, Tom and Paul, and I have known Tom longer than you. From kindergarten, when I used to take all the children on trips. He was just a little guy.
We can talk about stories later.
He has gray hair now, but maybe I do too. I just want to say that Paul struck me as just a tremendous candidate, and I would hope that whoever does get the vote tonight, that you would also step forward in April to one of the open seats. Because two finer candidates, I can't imagine. I will be supporting Tom, not because I've known him for so long, but because he did a marvelous thing. He did something that isn't commonly known at the MYA, and I'm very impressed with him. And he used his sense of responsibility and brains to rectify something. And I trust that his integrity and character will take him a long way in this world, and I would support him wholeheartedly for this position, and hope that Paul will step forward another time.
Anyone else?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, what I would like to do is we're going to go one by one, and I'm going to start with Bill. And vote on your first choice. We'll go around, and if we make the majority of four after one round, that will be the decision. If it's a three-to-three, then we'll have to do a second round, eliminating who does not meet the third. Okay? So Bill, would you please make a decision on who you would appoint?
What if I haven't made a decision?
That's unacceptable. I can pass.
Yeah, I'd pass.
Okay, Peter?
Tom Thornton.
Jackie?
Tom Thornton.
Finley?
Tom Thornton.
Tom?
Paul McLaughlin.
I'm going to say Tom Thornton. And Bill?
Tom Thornton.
Okay, so that's five to one. I'll tell you, the other two were really close, so I'll tell you. I'm glad we don't have to do this very often. So I would like, but I would strongly encourage, as has been mentioned, to rerun in April. Remember, there's going to be four seats up. Mine, yours, Tom. Oh, that's right, Peter, because you're finishing up that one, too. Who knows? Okay, so Tom, if he would come up?
Can we reconsider and go for a unanimous?
Madam Chair, that's a unanimous vote.
Okay. I believe we could, we need to do a second for reconsideration. Finley? So it's Bill made the motion, Finley second. All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
That's six-zero-zero. And do I go through each one again? Just, okay. So that would be Tom.
Tom Thornton.
Okay, and I believe that was all?
Yeah.
That was last. So it's unanimous for the record. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Tom, why don't you come on up?
While he's coming up, I would like to really thank Paul and Stephen for stepping up as well. We really do appreciate it, and it was a much tougher vote than it may have appeared. Both are very qualified to be part of this council, and thank you very much for your efforts. Please don't go away.
Exactly. Okay, we have to, well, Tom, both have to look at me and ask my exit. Now, I'm going to hold this for you. Whenever it's been done in the past, I hate it when you have to repeat, and you always get nervous, so you can't hear it. I always have people read it. It's a lot more comfortable. So I'm going to have you read this, which is the oath.
I need my glasses. I can't see either.
So you can just fill this in, just say this oath.
I, Tom Thornton, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I am faithful and partially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a member of the Merrimack Town Council according to the best of my abilities. I agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
So help you God. Very good.
Excellent.
Now you're really going to find out how much preparation is needed. Okay. Want to make sure this paperwork is put aside. Okay. What I would like to do now, I know one, a couple of people here who are here for Chapter 81. Are there any other chapters that the audience wants to talk about in the public hearing? Okay, without objection, I would like to do at least Chapter 81 now. Then we will go to the highway garage, and then go back to the public hearing for the rest of them. Is that all right with everyone? Without objection? Okay. So, public hearing, consideration of changes to chapters of the Merrimack Town Code. The Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 81. So let's just do that, and we'll do the remaining later. I know that there's some public testimony related to this as well. Okay, Kyle, you are going to be doing some language. We were going to make language more clear on 81-2-B.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. Town councilors, welcome Tom to the council. So, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's two Toms again. Never mind.
Mr. Thornton.
I'm sorry.
We've graduated from Tom M. to Tom T.
That's right. Well, I'll think of a way to differentiate. Just give me a little while. Go right ahead, Kyle, I'm sorry.
Sure thing. So following the first reading of Chapter 81 with the Town Council, I went back and looked at the language, and also spoke with both Commissioner Woods from Merrimack Village District and Superintendent Minor. Though they don't believe, I believe they don't support the changes, they can speak for themselves when they come up here. I did take into account their concerns about changing the numbers from a budgeting standpoint. So in addition to trying to add clarity to the changes, I also made a change in what I was proposing. So the way the change is now, I'm proposing that on projects, capital, projects that are in our capital improvement program, the reimbursement from MVD for water line costs to the town would be up to $25,000. Projects that are funded out of our yearly budget, the maximum cost per project to the Merrimack Village District would reimburse would only be $10,000. And I came at those numbers trying to take into account the difficulty in budgeting for our projects from their standpoint. One of the troubling things for both groups, when we're doing projects that will involve water lines, is often we don't know exactly where they are location-wise, how deep they are, and what the obstacles will be. So it can be difficult to arrive at an estimated cost for those kind of projects. So I thought that was hopefully a fair balance, and I'll leave it up to you folks to make the final decision.
Okay. Any questions prior to my opening?
Kyle, if I could, just could you delineate again the difference between the two numbers and why? I know you, just layman's terms maybe.
Sure. So each year, we present a capital improvement program to both the planning board and the Town Council, and that gets approved by the planning board. I kind of outlined our current projects that are in the capital improvement program that would be subject to the $25,000. Are the Bedford Road Bridge Project in 2018, the Route 3 Bridge by Pine and Berks in 2023, the Wire Road Intersection Project in 2024, the Turkey Hill Road Intersection Project in 2020, sidewalk projects in 2020, 2022, and 2024, and a sewer line extension project in 2020. Of those projects, the only one I have a budget estimate for is the Bedford Road Bridge Project. The estimated cost for the water line work on that project is $177,000. The cost to the town, because the state picks up 80% of it, would be $35,000. The projects where the $10,000 cap would come in would be our yearly budgeted projects, which are typically the larger ones that we do are funded out of the stormwater improvements that we do each year. So those kind of projects would fall under the $10,000 cap. Or emergency projects such as the Amherst Road Colored that we just did, and the Daniel Webster Colored that we're now completing. Those kind of projects that come up with less time to plan for, which would also mean that the Village District would have less time to budget for.
Okay. Thank you.
So in those two cases, Kyle, when you're talking about, for example, the Amherst, under those circumstances, what would be the?
The cap would be $10,000 in those instances.
Okay, because of the speed that it had to be done?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And currently, I should say, the cap is $1,000.
Correct. That is correct, which is the proposal to change that.
Correct.
Right. That's right. Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay, I'm going to open. Oh, you do, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I am a little confused. If I try to read the words here, I'm not sure I get all of the discussion that you've just been making out of it, and so it's hard to comprehend from the written word what you just described to us.
Okay.
I think I understand what you described to us, but I'm not getting the two tied together.
Okay.
Does this apply only to the Village District as far as water lines are concerned?
It does.
Well, they're the only ones that have water lines.
Correct.
But there's also utility lines and things like that.
Right. Other utility lines, public service, Liberty Utilities, Comcast, they're also in our right-of-way. If they're in our way, we call them up and tell them they have to relocate their lines out of our way at no cost to the town.
Okay.
They have to pick up 100% of the cost.
So by this, we're sort of being partners with MVD?
Correct.
Me and they are the same people.
Yeah. The, you know, there's significant overlap between the ratepayers to Merrimack Village District and the taxpayers, but it's not 100% overlap.
No, it's not. You're right. And so this applicability paragraph, 81, so the number 25,000 never existed before? Is that right?
That's correct.
And somehow we're delineating that because 81-2A talks about the capital improvement program?
Right. What I was trying to do is draw some clarity. So in 81-1, it's setting the policy that the maximum Merrimack Village District would be responsible for is $25,000. And then 81-2 applicability, it said, 81-2A says projects in the capital improvement program. 81-2B says that any project not in the capital improvement program is only subject to 10,000.
It doesn't really say not in, but because you've already included it in A, you're assuming that in B?
Would be in A.
You're only talking about the ones that are not in.
Right. If not A, then B, kind of. That was my rationale.
There's a big and there, so I wasn't, you know, at the end of A, there's an and, so I, it can get a little bit confusing. I'm not sure that I want to wordsmith this tonight because it's, but, okay. We'll go from there for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I will, oh, Finley.
I think, just, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Just a comment on it. I think with the other utilities, it's knowing that they pay for all, you know, removal, move, wow.
Removal.
And for them, it is a much easier task from a budget standpoint because they're large, large operations compared to Village District, which is much tinier. So I'm sure that that's the difficulty that we might hear about. But that's why it's always been $1,000. It was always low for as long as I can remember, but thanks.
Okay. Now, anyone say anything? Okay. I would like to open the public hearing at 7:48. And I know we have some people here who want to testify. Just introduce yourself, please. We know who you are, but for the record.
For the record, Ron Minor, Superintendent of Merrimack.
Is the button either that or it has to be closer?
Yep.
Keep on talking.
It's off. I can see it.
Okay, you need to push the button. It has to be bright.
I can see it off.
It looked like it was on. Ron Minor, Merrimack Village District Superintendent. The MVD is in opposition of this change to Chapter 81. We realize that our mains are within the right-of-way. We're different from other utilities. We, you know, we represent the same people. When a water main needs to be relocated, we feel it should be a project cost, not a charge, additional charge to the ratepayers. Just another point I would like to make is that we really don't have, the MVD does not have control over town projects, so, you know, changes in this chapter would have impacts to our budget. And that, that's all I have. I just...
What do you think is a fair amount of money then? Or what is your opinion about being charged to do such things? Maybe that's the first question I could ask. Because it has been $1,000 up to now.
It has been $1,000, and we're comfortable with that. That's something that I don't have to budget for, but I mean with, I suppose if there was a bunch of projects that came up that were, you know... But, I mean, with, I suppose if there was a bunch of projects that came up that were, you know, a thousand dollars each time, it would eventually affect the budget. But I think the ten thousand mark would. The capital part of it, you know, we can plan for that, but we would have upswings and downswings in our budget more so, so.
Want to do a question, Peter?
Ron, and I can respect that, that these short notice plans that affect you guys and your budget. I'm curious, do you guys have an emergency fund, or I don't know what you title a line, money put aside should something happen in an emergency, and how much is that?
We do. We do have a capital reserve, equipment and facilities that would, we could pull from. And I want, there is, I don't know the exact balance. I think it's up to around two million.
How much? I'm sorry?
Two million, I believe, right around that area. But we also are planning, at some point, we do have old water mains out in the system, aging infrastructure. So, we're trying to kind of put a nest egg away for those changes as well. Any upgrades that we need to do that are not budgeted, you know, that's kind of a fallback.
I get that. You have long-term plans.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Not that they'd all come out of capital reserves, but.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other, yes, Tom?
Ron, could you estimate for me the percentage of Merrimack residents that are and are not on MVD water? Are we talking like an eighty-twenty split or a ninety-ten, or I know it's not fifty-fifty.
It's not fifty-fifty. I mean, we do service roughly eighty percent of town, but certainly, I think the population's what? Twenty-seven, call it. Probably around ten thousand customers, so it's.
Ten thousand households or?
Customers.
Paying customers? I mean, because there's four in my house.
Yeah.
And I'm considered one customer, I presume, but, because the number of people you serve is a lot bigger than.
It would be, yeah. Yeah, I don't.
But there's also industry in town that you're not serving because they're serviced by Pennechuck.
Correct.
Right, in the south end of town and things of that nature. So, I guess what I hear Kyle saying is that if the town takes on all of the costs, then the taxpayers are paying for it, which includes twenty percent or so that are not getting any benefit from MVD and maybe are probably paying either for their own well or for water from somewhere else. Any other utility, and you are a utility, has to pay a hundred percent because they're in our right-of-way and they need to move and repair and all that, and they still have repair costs and things of that nature to deal with. And so, I guess I'm thinking that it's reasonable to have some fair share or some splitting there just so that the ratepayers are responsible for the infrastructure, the system that they're utilizing, and the taxpayers are not necessarily responsible for the whole thing. Right now, effectively, it's a whole thing because anytime you go to move a pipe, I'm sure it costs significantly more than a thousand dollars. And so, I kind of tend to think that Kyle's come up with a good balance here. Unless you can change my mind here somewhere, I.
My concern would be if there is, you know, one or two movements, you know, if we had to relocate one or two, it wouldn't probably be as bad, but if there was more, I mean, I know just this year, I think there was three unplanned, you know, Amherst, Culvert.
Amherst, the Daniel Webster.
And I would imagine that if someone petitioned the Town Council for support on something like that, we could consider that as an exception to the rule. But one other question I had, the Turkey Hill Bridge, when it was replaced, you've got water lines that are going underneath that bridge. Is that right?
Correct.
Did you upgrade those lines when you?
We did, and I saw the totals, and I didn't have time to really look into it. But I know we paid for, that was part of our expansion on that, that whole, the sixteen-inch line going up Turkey Hill Road and Continental Boulevard or Camp Sergeant Road. So, we did pay for the high service, I'm sorry, the sixteen-inch main of the regular service that to get moved up onto the bridge. And I'm not a hundred percent on the high service because there's two mains that run through there that actually got put onto the bridge or incorporated into the bridge.
Okay. But you paid more than a thousand dollars for that effort because of the upgrade?
Absolutely. And looking back, not looking back, but one of the projects we just, McGaw Bridge, we wanted to upsize the main in that road, so we paid the difference from a six-inch line to an eight-inch line. We paid additional charges, engineering costs over and above what was normally paid, what we normally would pay in addition to the thousand dollars. So, we, there was, we did kick in funding. Granted, it was for an improvement for us, but we did, you know, we did pay a little bit more.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, okay. I would like to close the public hearing.
Any other public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, please come down. I thought he was talking for you. I should know better.
You should know better.
We know who you are. Just introduce yourself, Ron.
Longwoods Two Arbor Street, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Also involved with the Merrimack Village District, I feel like a recalcitrant child returning to a bad scene. I'm in opposition to this change, not because Mr. Fox hasn't done a fine job looking over his budget and looking over what may or may not be imperatives of his. He's done a fine job, and I want you people to understand that. A thousand percent raise of a bill that we've been paying for the last nineteen years comes as somewhat of a shock. And the twenty-five thousand dollar or up to is new language to us. The thousand dollars has been in place primarily for a stop sign, my words, my description. And this all came about because at a point when the town improved a section of old Camp Sergeant Road, or Camp Sergeant Road, depending on which end of it you start from, from which end you start. And in, during that improvement, there was, I don't know who, it wasn't MVD's mistake, but there was a really low estimate in specifically blasting costs and for getting our water line down to the levels we like to put them to escape frost. And we were summarily, with a big smile, presented with the bill for that extra work. And that began a three-year fight. Just, I'll just term it as that with the, then I think, Board of Selectmen and the Merrimack Village District Commission.
I remember now.
And it didn't turn acrimonious, but it raised several discussions. When we got all done, Selectmen Christensen at the time, I recall that name, I believe Norm Carr was chair. But Selectmen Christensen brought us both out of the swamp in terms of the pipe had been there a while, it wasn't worth all of the money that we thought we should recover, dah dah dah. And we were able to recover some of that cost. Very subsequent to that, this ordinance was suggested, worked out between the two parties, and passed. And that's the reason for my saying that at least the eighty-one-two B, the thousand dollars, was more a stop sign or more a, hey, guys, we need to work together. We can do these projects. And yes, you're going to have new pipe in the ground and new service entrances and whatever, so help us out. Been fine. Certainly before this change was proposed, the commission was not made aware of the coming change. I was sitting at home enjoying, watching you people do your fantastic job, and you do. And I heard the figures, and that was the end of my enjoyment for that night. I had a subsequent conversation with Mr. Fox the next morning or afternoon. He explained some things to me. I still am not totally understanding of where he came up with the figures. It had to do with construction costs rising and time passing, and twenty-five thousand dollars seemed like a good number. We don't think so, Ron. The commission doesn't think so. Am I going to carry the day? I doubt it. I will tell you that I have the exact obverse side of the coin in terms of taxes and eighty percent coverage and twenty percent paying more than they should. I think when the town comes up with projects that requires utilities to move things, yes, there is a cost. But I pay my taxes to the town first, and I pay my water rates second. And for the life of me, you say potato, I say potato. I think the ratepayers are getting charged twice, not at the same rate. I give you that. And I'll leave you with this thought. It isn't all loss, or it isn't all a gain to the ratepayer. When you read real estate ads, oftentimes you see utilities included in the ad that generally, at least in my experience, or I think what I understand about the way things work, adds value to the property in terms of sales. That value gets turned to the town with each sale, tax-based. So, it's just a way of looking at things. But I beg you to look at it at least a bit in terms of, you know, what we're really doing. You know, it's like, take it out of this pocket, put it in this pocket. What are we doing? So, that's my spiel. Thank you for your patience. Congratulations. I had occasion to be in your spot, if I may.
You have words of wisdom.
And I was asked what the, I think it was for the past year, whenever that was that I was being interviewed, what was the greatest accomplishment of the Town Council? I related to them at that time that I wasn't going to stay specifically to a year. But I thought at the time, and I still believe it, that the greatest accomplishment of the council has been the effort and the result they've made in terms of a rather flat tax rate. You're to be commended for that, and you still are. So, don't mess it up by raising my taxes.
Peter first and then Finley. Well, wait a minute. Let's do the public hearing, and then we'll talk about it, right? Is there any other public comment that wants to be made? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at eight oh four. Oh, it's his last minute. Come on. I'm already, it's like, oh, nope. Just say Naeman Street.
Thank you. Cat the Stack, Seven O, Drive, Merrimack. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I feel compelled. I did not want to speak tonight. However, I would like to respond to a comment you just made about utilities and the town and adding value to the town. I think we know. I'm on a private well that is contaminated. I don't have utilities from MVD. I think I'm at a detriment. I think I have a loss of property value and a loss of positive influence in a sale of a home with a contaminated well. So, I feel compelled to respond to you with that. It's, I'm not adding value to the town. In fact, I'm taking value away from the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going, going, gone. Anyone else saying none? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at eight oh five, and now I'm going to recognize Peter and then Finley. Yeah, you do. Go ahead, Peter.
Just an informational question. I don't know who can answer this. Informational question. How, when did that thousand-dollar fee, when did that ordinance begin? How long has that been in place? Oh, I'm sorry?
March tenth, nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Was adopted at a meeting.
So, twenty years ago.
Give or take. I'll give you twenty.
Thank you.
Finley?
Actually, I was going to have it as a question to, sorry about that. I was going to have it as a question to Lon, but I'm just, you know, I don't, I can appreciate the, because of the tiny aspect of their budget, you know, the impact that, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars would have. That is, it doesn't happen as often because it's a capital project that could be planned for ten years out in theory, or seven years out anyhow. And so, but I didn't know if there was a number, and actually, I think I know the answer. So, Lon doesn't have to come up. I didn't know if there was a number that it could be increased to because of the nineteen years that had gone by and something that could be planned in their own budget for the future. But I know his answer, so I guess I'm thinking out loud. I just would, you know, from my standpoint, looking at our budget, I would try and see how I could have things in to accommodate that type of thing. But I can appreciate their position, so I don't know.
Jackie?
I have a question for Kyle. I don't think you really need to go off here, but Kyle, when the state is determining grant money, for example, do they figure the moving of utility lines of all sorts within the cost of the project in order to figure the town's portion of the project cost?
Good question.
If I'm understanding the question, does the state participate in the costs of the water line work?
Well, kind of, I guess. Is the water line work, in this case, part of the general costs that are considered and the cost of the project?
It is. So, the easiest example I can give is the bridge projects we've done. On those projects, the water line relocations and putting them back into place have been a project cost. DOT has allowed us to carry that as a project cost, luckily for everybody. In those cases, the state picks up eighty percent of those costs. And what we would be looking for, we certainly wouldn't look to recover money from the Village District that the state picked up. So, when I'm, when I'm, when we're looking at the bridge projects that are state aid or federal aid, we're only looking at the twenty percent share that the Merrimack taxpayers pay.
And you would expect the Village District to pick up some portion of that?
Correct. A great example of that is the Turkey Hill Road Bridge that was asked about. You may remember that era funding came in and actually paid for the town's twenty percent construction cost. So, we didn't ask MVD for any money on that project.
Okay. And then where does the twenty-five, when, where would the twenty-five thousand dollars go? Directly into the money for the project?
It would come back to the town as a revenue in the general fund, I believe.
In the general fund?
Is that correct, Paul?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to figure out future balance.
The money that comes back from Merrimack Village District on these projects goes to the general fund?
The twenty-five K will go to help offset the cost of the project. So, if the project, it would come in as revenue. So, it'd be like any other revenue, we just budget revenue like we budget state revenues when we do a capital reserve project that has state and capital reserve funds, it would be the same thing. It'll be. When we do a capital reserve project that has state and, and, um, capital reserve funds, it would be the same thing. It'll be state, federal, and then capital reserve fund, and then other. So it would come in as revenue because we have to gross appropriate. So it would come across as revenue to help offset the cost of the project.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Quick question. What if it were a state project, for example? Let's say exit eleven, and they were digging that up for whatever reason, and the water lines are there. What would be the circumstances then? Would they, would the state, what would the payment be then?
Typically, the state asks the utilities to pay all costs. Good example of that is, um, the past two years ago and three years ago, the state paved their section of January after highway, north and south of our section, and they actually send us a bill for raising our manhole covers, our sewer manhole covers, because they, that's our utility. Um, state charges us for that. They charge the gas company for raising their valve boxes for the gas lines, and I believe they charged the village district for raising their valve boxes as well.
Interesting. I'm just trying to think of a correlating situation to help understand. Peter?
Kyle, if they, if we found that our percentage of the pay in the twenty percent, if I'm hearing right, let's say it were, it were twenty-five thousand to pay for the water utilities, would we, so would we transfer that twenty-five thousand then to the MVD, or would we make it a lower percentage? Uh, is, how, how would that work?
I'm not sure I understand.
Uh, and I'm, I'm trying to follow this in it. So you, you, for example, like the Bedford Road Bridge, we know ahead what's, what's gonna happen there.
Yeah.
Um, and let's say, uh, and correct me if I'm, I'm even thinking about this the wrong way, but let's say there's gonna be, uh, the cost out of our pocket to move the, uh, move the water line, although it's gonna cost thirty-five thousand. So we, under this plan, because it's a capital improvement plan, the twenty-five thousand would go, of that thirty-five thousand would go to the MVD?
Correct. We would only bill up to the twenty-five thousand.
And we would assume the ten dollars?
Correct.
Okay. So now, if a project came along and it were under twenty-five thousand?
We would only bill up to the project cost for the water.
And we would assume no part of that?
So for example, if, on a bridge project eighty-twenty, if the water line cost was a hundred thousand dollars, twenty percent of that would be twenty thousand. The bill to the village district would be only twenty thousand.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Kyle, would it be ridiculously unwieldy if you took each instance up on its own merit of with the MVD? Would that be really, instead of trying to get it in black and white?
It would put him in a position having to make a judgment. Yes, Paul?
I, I think that would be more difficult for MVD to try to budget.
That too.
Right now, um, the planning board is going to be looking at the school capital improvement plan. You already done that, okay. You're gonna get, they're gonna get the MVD's capital improvement plan, and they're gonna get the town's capital improvement plan. They're looking at the total improve, the improvement plans. So what happens is that when we do a bridge or, or things, there's gonna have to be more communications between my office finance and the MVD's office to say, look, we have this bridge project if this passes in two thousand twenty, and it's X, Y, Z, and we estimate your cost to be twenty-five thousand dollars, so they can start planning for it that way. So there'll be more planning. If we do it one-offs, it's gonna be very hard for Kyle, not so much for Kyle, but to get me the cost and then for MVD to plan for it, and that's when you're really gonna start seeing these spikes and peaks and valleys. So if, if they plan for, for instance, we plan for the Turkey Hill Bridge, four million dollars for that Turkey Hill Road Bridge. At the time the economy hit the skids, and aramoney came in, federal money came in, and it cost the town of Merrimack zero dollars for that bridge. But we were planning for, for five, six, seven years. What we ended up doing, by then coming in and doing that, we're able to turn that money that we saved for that bridge project and put it into other bridge projects. The same thing could be said for MVD. If we give them a number of twenty-five thousand dollars for US Route Three Bridge, that's coming in twenty-twenty-two? Twenty-twenty-two? If it comes in at twenty, they got five thousand dollars that they've been planning for. They got extra that they could turn, then turn, and since it's in the capital reserve fund, if I hear correctly, they're gonna be using this capital reserve fund to fund these projects from, from their capital reserve fund, so it will smooth out and they'll have an extra five thousand dollars. So when the next project comes in in twenty-thirty, there'll already be five thousand dollars that are good and safe.
Yep.
So to do it consistently, I think, would be better than the fluctuation, take case by case.
Sounds like it.
Plus it puts, um, Kyle in a position to make a judgment. I think he needs parameters determined by us.
Yep.
So I'm helping you.
And, and to a point I heard earlier, the council can waive the fee on any project they so chose, and the review of the capital improvement program would be a great time for that to happen, um, should, should that allowance need to be made.
Or request by MVD?
Correct.
Under circumstances?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
One other thing, i- if you're considering leaving the two dollar amounts, uh, to Councilor Koenig's point, eighty-one dash two, uh, equivalent, yeah. A, it says those projects related to the town's capital improvement plan, and it gives a binding statement. I think you need to take the and out. If, if what is meant in, in eighty-one dash one is twenty-five thousand dollars for capital improvements, or, it, it can't, it has to be either.
It should be or, not and.
It should be an or, not an and, because if used and.
It's an addition to, rather than, as contrast to.
Yes, thank you.
I agree with that. Does that help, Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, it does. Everyone understand what I'm talking about? Changing and to or? Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Can I ask you just another question?
Please do.
Not to get too complicated with this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Because it probably won't help the village district in their budgeting, but if you, if we consider an eighty-twenty split kind of an information, what if we said that the, the fee will be eighty percent up to twenty-five thousand, or eighty percent up to ten thousand of the town's cost? And that, that way, if it's less than twenty-five thousand, they don't, they don't pay the twenty thousand, and the town pays zero. They would pay eighty percent, and the town would pay the remaining twenty percent, uh, or something of that order. I, I'm just trying to find, I, I know it's not gonna make the village district happy, but it's, it's a small compromise that still gives the people that are not rate payers a little bit of a break in having to pay for, for infrastructure for MVD.
Understood.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying, Tom.
Well, right now, it's a flat number, twenty-five thousand.
Up to.
Up to twenty-five thousand. So any cost up to twenty-five thousand, MVD would have to take care of. If you said that they would take care of eighty percent of the town's cost up to twenty-five thousand, then if the town's cost was twenty-five thousand, they would take into account eighty percent of that, or twenty thousand.
So it wouldn't be necessarily.
Wouldn't be the whole twenty-five thousand, with the town paying zero in that case.
Would it, would it be simpler just to?
Say eighty percent?
Eighty percent of twenty-five thousand dollars and make that the number?
Just a flat number? I mean, because then if it's only ten thousand the town owes, they have to pay the full ten thousand versus paying eight thousand, or something like that. So I would just.
Oh, rather than having two different numbers? Is that what you're saying?
Um, no, no, that, that, maybe that was a bad choice, but if it was.
You're only talking capital improvement sections. Is that what you mean?
Well, I, actually, I would apply the eighty percent to both numbers, but it just says that, that the town is willing to share that amount up to this amount, and then the town will pick everything else up. It's, if it's too complicated to go there, then, then I'll just skip it. I just.
I guess if you're, if you're doing up to eighty percent of the twenty-five thousand.
Eighty percent of the twenty-five thousand, so.
Then just multiply the twenty-five thousand times eighty percent, and that's your number.
But if, no, but if the project's a hundred thousand dollars, then they'll pay the full twenty-five. Uh, but if it's only twenty-five thousand dollars, they would only pay twenty under Tom's formula.
Okay.
Paul?
So if we look at the capital improvement plan, a project in the capital improvement plan, MVD's cost anything over thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, they'll be paying the twenty-five thousand dollars. So for instance, if their cost in Councilor Koenig's plan was twenty thousand, they would only be paying sixteen thousand instead of up to the twenty. So there would be a cost share between the town and MVD in that way. But if the plan, if it was Kyle's point, thirty-five thousand, they would pay the full twenty-five thousand dollars to the town. We'd pick up the additional ten thousand dollars. Makes sense?
The other one are proposed? Does that make sense?
I'm just, well, that makes sense to me, because that's exactly what I propose, but, I mean, if people don't understand it, then maybe it's not worth the headache, but.
But it's still a wordsmithing that would have to be completed.
It, it's just saying eighty percent of this, up, eighty percent of the town's cost up to twenty-five thousand, or eighty percent of the town's cost up to ten thousand in the two different sections. Just trying to throw my bone.
Okay, so what you're proposing in section eighty-one dash one, as well as eighty-one dash two, to add the cost of said relocation will be eighty percent of the town cost up to twenty-five thousand dollars under section one. Under section two, you wanna do the eighty percent up to tenth? Okay, so you would add. Are you getting it, Paul?
I'm, I'm trying to go through this.
All you'd have to do is the cost of said relocation, is where you would add the eighty percent of the town cost up to twenty-five thousand. And under eighty-one dash two, any project of the town council which crossed the Merrimack District more, uh, any project the town of Merrimack completes, eighty percent of the town, Merrimack Village District will pay eighty percent of the town's up to ten thousand.
I would probably leave that first line alone. And the second line, I would change to with respect to any project that costs the town more than ten thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what you.
Village District shall share eighty percent of that cost up to a ten thousand dollar maximum.
Okay, so the second sentence, with respect to any project which crossed the Merrimack Village District.
If it actually costs the town more than ten thousand dollars, the Merrimack Village District shall be, shall pay the eighty percent of that up to ten thousand dollars.
Is everyone following what we're talking about?
So that I understand, if a water relocation cost is less than ten grand, the eighty percent policy doesn't apply.
No, it does apply.
You're not, you're not saying that, because that first sentence says, this policy shall be applicable to the following types of projects. Any project which costs Merrimack Village District more than ten thousand. So that tells me that anything less than ten thousand is not applicable to the policy, so therefore the eighty percent doesn't apply.
That's a, that's a failure, this first line in the first place, regardless of what we do with the eighty percent.
I, I think it would become a, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, under ten thousand dollar projects, we really wouldn't be relocating a, a line from the ten thousand dollars in a project, you know, on a bridge.
I'd like to make a, um, executive decision. This has to be wordsmithed. We can't do this here.
Why don't we skip it then?
What I'd like to do is table this. Can we do another public hearing? Is that, I'm not sure what the parliamentary.
We're gonna have to do a public hearing.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to actually go back, uh,
Start over.
And start over. If we're gonna change that to the up to, we should do a new first read and rerun this whole thing through the project again.
And we've got time for it.
Yes, we do.
Motion to table, chapter eighty-one.
I would say.
We've got, um, December seventh and also December twenty-first. We've got two more meetings to get it done.
We, we got plenty of time to get it done. I'm not saying, we can, but we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board to rewrite it, so.
It's, it's not horrible.
No, it's not horrible, but we'd have to start all over in the ordinance process.
We have to be first reading?
First read, public hearing.
So we could do the first reading December seventh?
We can do that.
And we could do the public hearing on December twenty-first?
Correct.
And then we can do the final reading?
Go to consent agenda in January.
In January, yes. And, and we also have, you know, a couple other things coming through later on.
Correct.
Um, but, uh.
So the final vote on the acceptance of the revised town code will be in January, not December.
Right. I, I would, um, request that we, the council does not table, but actually makes the motion to bring this back for a first reading with corrected language.
Okay, I guess that's.
Fair enough. I don't know necessarily why, but I, we have time, so I'm not opposed to that.
Well, I guess that's what I meant to say. I did do it right.
Right, but it, to me, if you table it, we're gonna pick it up from this point and, on the seventh, and technically what we really wanna do is we wanna pick it up from the beginning, so.
So it'll be a first reading on December seventh? It'll be a first reading on December seventh?
Right. Basically, remand this back to the first reading.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think any actions required. We can just reschedule it for the date certain.
Correct. Do we need a motion?
No. Well, we oughta, we oughta.
We should do something.
Move it out of the public hearing, so I.
You gotta do something.
Okay, Tom, go for it.
Move to turn back to the first reading on December seventh.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tom Koenig, second by Bill Boyd. Because we'll be in here, uh, here in our wordsmithing this. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Seven zero zero. That's your first vote is on water lines. Okay, so you're gonna wordsmith? Okay. And we will gonna have another public hearing, gentlemen, so that'll be another opportunity. Okay, thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Sure. As long as it's nice.
Initially, um, and I, I respect that the commissioner came out and what he had to say and, and his analogy of one pocket to the other. And I, I think that Kyle, um, when, uh, Ron and Lon went and met with Kyle, and Kyle tried to come up with a, um, uh, I guess a, a negotiation to it. And I, you know, I, I hope they recognize too that this is twenty years later, and I agree with Kyle, the cost of business, as you gentlemen know, has gone up. And we're now, as Tom said, throwing a bone and trying to work with you guys too. So I just ask you that this isn't about, um, trying to stick it to anybody. It's trying to, uh, you know, work with you, but also recognizing the cost of business.
Well said.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going back to our schedule now. Highway garage update presentation submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox and Town Manager Eileen Cabanel. Town Council will be presented with the progress made to date on the highway garage project, including completed floor plan, conceptual site plan, and architectural renderings of the existing and proposed building. The floor is yours. And thank you for understanding about our movement of the agenda.
Sorry. Kyle, would you like to introduce, um, the construction manager and our architect engineer for the project?
Yep, I certainly will. Just not right yet. We're not going dark yet. Good evening, Town Council. I'm, I'm very happy to be here tonight to, um, share with you the progress that we've made on the, uh, the Merrimack Highway Maintenance Facility. Um, I thought I would start with a brief recap of, of how we got to where we are today. The, the project kicked off in earnest, uh, following the, the April vote of this year, where the, the voters approved the three-point-three million dollar bond to renovate the existing building, um, to become vehicle storage, and to, um, construct a new building that would house the, the day-to-day operations.
So Kyle, quick question. Do you think the lighthouse is gonna need zoning setback in the, uh, in the neighborhood?
We're, we're going for the New Englander look.
I, I, I'm happy.
The little building on the bottom is my office. So we began in earnest with our, um, with our search for our, our engineer architect team. Um, and, and we, following that search, we settled on the, uh, the company HL Turner out of Concord. And our project manager, Bill Hickey, is here. And, uh, Bill's actually gonna join me up here at the, uh, at the table for, for the presentation.
Guess that's my cue.
Yep. Uh, once, once we had our, our project manager, um, in place, we started to look at who we wanted to have as our construction manager to help us with this project. Uh, we've gone away from the, the typical way that, that projects had traditionally happened in municipal settings of a design bid build project, and we're, we're doing it more as a team approach. And we're, we're doing it more as a team approach where we have our project manager who does the architectural and engineering of the project and the construction oversight of the project. And we've partnered with a construction management company that's gonna manage the, the construction for us. We interviewed a number of firms and that, and it was a, a really great process, we got to meet some really great companies. Um, and I'm happy to say that Stacy Clark and Tony DeCosta are here from, from the Turnstone Corporation out of Milford, and, uh, they've been great partners so far. And I have no reason to expect that to change. The, um, the committee that's been working on the project since the, uh, vote passed, um, consists of Town Manager Cabanel, Finance Director McCallie, Town Councilors Jackie Flood and Finley Rothaus, myself, and Operations Manager Lori Barrett. And, uh, we've been working long and hard, um, to get to this point where we have some, a solid floor plan to show, some elevation views of the, of the project. And, um, and we're, we're really getting quite far in the, uh, in the process. The next steps are to, uh, begin working on the HVAC stuff and, and the, the electrical and, and all of the, the inner workings. Um, and, and in light of that, at our Wednesday meeting this week, we met with a representative from Liberty Utilities and a rep from Eversource to talk about rebates and incentive programs um, associated, um, with, with these kind of projects. And that was a really great meeting and, and we learned that, um, Liberty Utilities will pay us seventy-five percent of improvements over standard building codes. So for example, if we put extra insulation in the roof, they'll actually pay seventy-five percent of that incremental cost to do that improvement, which of course will bear, um, fruit for us long, long term. Uh, so we're gonna certainly look for those kind of opportunities, both on the gas side and the electrical side. Just one final note before we get to Bill's part of the presentation. Um, what we're gonna show everybody tonight is, um, a few of the plans of, of where we're at. I did put this plan set on our, our website, so if anyone's watching at home, they could go to the Merrimack Town website, click on the Public Works page, and you can have access as you're watching the, the telecast, um, to see the plans in better detail right from your computer. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you. Good evening. So we'll start our presentation, I'm not sure how to get it up on the screen. And I think the first plan you're gonna actually see is a perspective of the building. And you have to look just at the right angle to pick up the subtle hints of the lighthouse, but they're there. Yeah, you know, the nice part is we don't have the Shoreland Protection Act to worry about where we are, so. But yeah, there are a few subtle hints of the, of the lighthouse incorporated.
I have a, I have a thumb drive if that would help.
No, no, I just need to set the displays.
Okay. So it looks more like the lighthouse?
There it is, there's our lighthouse. There we go, great. Okay, super. Thank you again. Um, you know, what we'd like to do is just give you a quick update this evening, um, on where we are. You know, I think Kyle gave a great description. Uh, the process has been moving along really well. You know, we're really have locked down a floor plan, we've locked down elevations, aesthetics, um, and we're really kinda moving into material selections and, and looking at things like that. So I'll just run you through, we have some site plans and then some building plans, and if you have any questions, please, please ask them.
In the, and I probably should have asked Finley or Jackie, but when you guys were doing this, Kyle, um, did, did you guys take into, um, account the opinions of the, the folks there, the, your staff as to their needs as well and?
Absolutely. One of the great suggestions we got from Turnstone early on was to hang clipboards around the, the garage and then, you know, they, they made the great point that oftentimes people, they'll, they'll think of something, but then at the end of the day, when it's time to follow through on getting it to, to the committee, you may not remember. So there's clipboards hanging around the garage where people can scribble down ideas, and Lori's been collecting those ideas.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, we made a presentation to the DPW, the highway staff, you know, about the project, and we've really been encouraging people to give us their thoughts and ideas, 'cause those are the folks who are gonna have to live in the building. And, you know, it'd be, it's very important to get, you know, everybody involved and, and incorporate their thoughts and ideas, so. You know, sheet C point one is just the, simply the existing site plan, just so you have a reference. Um, I know you guys all can't see.
Also, we just wanna let the council know that we did invite the neighbors to both this meeting and the one we're doing with the planning board. So we are also taking into account the neighbors in the area and trying to get them involved in the project, not just our employees, but the surrounding neighborhoods and neighbors. So at the request of one of the councils before.
Thank you very much, Paul.
So, uh, sheet C, uh, one point zero, just simply an existing conditions plan, Turkey Hill Road is running parallel to the bottom of the sheet. Existing highway garage, salt shed, fueling station, just for your reference. So the next sheet is actually colored, everybody likes to look at colors, but this is the proposed DPW garage is the darker yellow. I wish we'd used a color that was a little easier to describe, but, um, we're proposing the building kinda be located to the north of the existing building. And a couple other, uh, changes is a new driveway on the north end of the property. And it's important to note, there's some parking here, and this will be the public entrance at this end, so any public that wants to come to the building will simply come down the drive, and there's parking there, and they can walk into the office for any services. And then there'll be a drive at the south end, there is a gravel drive here now that will be enhanced. And we're gonna look to relocate the fueling station, 'cause the project really has three parts. The first one is the new highway maintenance facility, I gotta make sure I get that term right, we worked hard on that. The second part is the renovation to the existing building, and the third part of the project is the fueling station. So for the fueling station, it's new pumps and a canopy, the tanks are intended to remain in place. So for the floor plan, um, you know, we have, the maintenance bays are on the right-hand side of the plan, if you will. Um, we have, uh, four double bays, so essentially there'll be eight bays, uh, there's two maintenance bays. And then there's the office part of the building, and I'm gonna need my glasses to see this. So in the bottom, we have, the big room at the bottom is a training room, um, which is really lacking now. We have conference rooms, operation managers' offices, other foreman offices, and we have suitable locker room and bathroom facilities, which I'm sure you've all visited the existing building, are just a little lacking over there. And we have various storage areas and, and things like that. So, I don't, I don't know if you have any questions, do you want me to go into, I don't know how much detail to go into the actual construction of the building, if you're interested in any of that.
You just might touch on the efficiencies that we're looking for, the energy efficiencies and the.
You know, the, you know, Kyle, it was great, and it's very difficult, with, in our experience, to get the folks who actually administer the rebate programs to even talk with you, but Kyle was able to get both utilities to our meeting the other day, which was great, they gave us some great ideas. The actual energy code for the state is very, very minimal. Um, you know, R-ten in the walls, R-twenty in the roof, which is really fairly easy to achieve. And like we discussed at this meeting the other day, that, you know, you're really, where you wanna put your insulation is in the roof, that's where you're gonna get the most bang for your buck. But we're looking at somewhere between an R-fifteen and R-twenty wall system, and we'll be likely close to an R-forty roof system, so it'll be pretty much, you know, close to twice what code requirements. It's not a lot of money to do that, but it's money very well spent.
And saved in the future.
Yes. You know, it's, it's great to build a building, but if the operational costs are reasonable, you know, it, it really pays dividends in the long run. So the, you know, we did some work with Turnstone, and Lori had a great point. Originally, we were thinking we were gonna wood frame the entire building, and we stuck with that based on budget for the office portion, but we're gonna use a pre-engineered metal building. And the main reason, Lori brought up the point, that the ceiling will actually slope with the roof. So if there's work to be done on a dump truck or other truck that needs to be raised or lowered, they'll have the space to do that. If it was wood framed, they would not have the space to open, or raise the truck bed in, in the bays. So that, you know, that, that's the kind of, you know, suggestion that really makes this project work really well. So just a couple elevations of the building, um, obviously the large overhead doors are the maintenance bays. Uh, we have, let's see, the public entrance will be here. You know, some employee pass doors and things, egress doors, uh, some windows for the offices. But, you know, the intent is to keep it as residential looking as possible. So at this point, we're proposing a vinyl sided office portion of the building with asphalt roof shingles. In the maintenance bays, it'll be a metal siding, um, and we're also gonna do asphalt roof shingles on that portion of the building as well to help keep with that residential look as best we can for a building of this size. The windows are gonna be double hung, you know, similar to you'd see in a residence, so they'll be, you know, the aesthetic will be similar there as well.
Metal siding.
Yes.
I, I know that there was a long conversation about the siding, again, is that gonna look residential as well too? I mean, obviously you're not gonna have these jaws to make it look residential, but you're trying to as much as possible.
Right, the, the metal siding, you know, people I think tend to have a negative connotation of metal siding. Metal siding, I'll say, has come a long way over the years, there's a number of different patterns, colors, textures. And part of the next step is we're gonna be looking at material samples and as a, you know, as a group making decision on materials, colors, textures and that type thing, so as much as possible. It won't be a bright silver.
Well, we have a representative here too, so.
And while my taste might be limited, Jackie's got good taste, so we're, we're all set. And I would just add to that, Nancy, that if you look at the top right picture, the west elevation of the building,
Yeah.
that's the portion of the building that's gonna be facing the road.
Roof.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So the, the, the maintenance bay portion of the building, which would have the metal siding, is hidden behind the, the office portion, which is really the architectural, residential portion of it.
Good, good point.
That's a very good point. So, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can to, uh, to make it, it look as residential, but Kyle's point is, is well mentioned.
And remember, we did go on a field trip to a couple of buildings to check out the, the siding, so we, we were pretty comfortable that.
You have some ideas.
Ideas of, to make it less commercial.
Yeah, Turnstone is working on two.
I'll tell ya, it's gonna be better than what's there now, so, let's, let's keep that.
Turnstone's working on a couple local projects, like Paul said, and it was great that they were able to arrange a tour for us so we could take a look at them. Um, the last two sheets are nothing more, we have plans and elevations of the existing garage.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Bill, I guess you had a question I didn't realize.
Yeah, um, Bill or Kyle, can you talk to me a little bit why we're doing typical asphalt fiberglass roof as opposed to a metal type roof? Outside of, would cost be in a factor, I get the cost piece, but just, just talk to me.
Two reasons. Uh, one, really to try to keep that residential appearance as best as we can. And the second, and for us probably more important reason, is the asphalt shingles will hold the snow. One of the problems with a metal roof over, you know, with an eve line over the overhead doors is the snow comes off in, in big sheets and causes a problem, they're constantly outshoveling and removing snow from in front of the doors. But with the asphalt shingle roof, the snow won't come off like that, it'll hold on the roof. So it, it really is a better, better product to use above, uh, an eve line with overhead doors.
I guess I kinda, somebody who has an asphalt roof that, that's somewhat similar to what you're presenting, you know, with, with the heavy storm that we tend to get here in New England, I'm usually out there in the middle of it with my shovel, shoveling the snow off the roof, because I'm trying to preserve the integrity. Is, is, do you have any concerns that, that that's not gonna happen by virtue of?
The, you know, there are building codes, the code will, you know, the building will be designed to code or overcode, you know, will you never have to shovel the roof? I don't think we can guarantee you that. But the intent is not for you to be up there every winter removing snow from the roof. Even with the metal roof, what we would probably recommend, there are snow guards you can put along the edge that keep that snow from sliding off. So you would, you know, in my mind, it would be a similar situation, whether it was metal or asphalt. If you had that much snow up there, you'd have to shovel it either way.
I mean, I understand the snow falling off the roof, I mean, I, I understand the snow falling off the roof, I guess I'm looking at it from having to send one of our workers up there and, and, you know, God forbid something happens. You know, I just, to me, that's a, it's, it's easy if it's a metal roof. When the sun hits, that snow's gonna pop right up and it's gonna go right down the ground, very easy to tend to snow on the ground as opposed to sending one of our DPW guys up onto the roof with the shovel to, to shovel that stuff off, that's just how I'm approaching it.
You know, I just, you know, like, again, we can't guarantee you'll never have to shovel the roof. The, the building's designed for about three feet of very heavy wet snow. So, I don't know if that helps if, at all. You know, that's just a code requirement, but again, I don't think anything's been a hundred percent decided at this point. You know, I think if there are options and ideas and thoughts, you know, the materials can be changed.
Okay, Bill, thank you, I appreciate it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you have a question, you need to be able to come up and recognize, just say who you are and stuff. I'll allow some questions.
My name's Stephen Garzinski, and I got a question about the roof.
Okay, now you need to talk into the microphone, 'cause you're being recorded, so you have to.
Okay, all right. An asphalt roof is gonna be more maintenance. And even if the snow doesn't drop off it heavily, the water's still gonna come off. And it's not falling in a good place. And the snow, I don't know what the drainage is in front of that building gonna be. It's gonna have to be moved all the time, I don't know where that water's gonna be going, the snow is gonna have to be moved. And I think something like a shed roof would be better, where it could all go to one side. Say like if it went to the back, and forget about it. And that could be a metal roof, where it would slide off faster, and if that faced the sun, then you wouldn't have to worry about all that snow buildup as much, the sun would be hitting the sunny side on a metal roof.
When we were first starting with the design, we looked at a number of different options for the roof, um, including just one big gable roof from one end of the other, the long way. You know, you were talking a shed roof, which would be similar to that, and the concern was the building would get very, very tall. And we were, you know, again, trying to keep as best we could with the building of the side with the character of the neighborhood and not have the building be overly tall. And the, you know.
Yeah, I don't think it would, how much would increase it over, from what it is, I don't think it would have to.
I don't remember.
As long as you get a slope on it,
Right.
I don't think it would have to increase that much.
You know, and I, the asphalt shingles, you know, a good heavy asphalt shingle will last longer than a simple three-tab shingle. So I'm not, you know, there's not a, the life expectancy for a metal roof versus an asphalt shingle roof and the maintenance required, they're not that different in, in, in what we've seen.
I disagree with on that.
Okay.
Besides, you can, I don't know if you're aware, but you can get a metal roof that looks like a slate roof, it's more expensive, but let's make more maintenance free once it's out.
Yeah, we can revisit that.
Thank you very much, David. Uh, Tom Thornton, you wanna say something?
Yes, uh, what's the pitch on the roof?
I believe it's a four.
A four pitch. You know, with metal, it's, in, Kyle, how many times you think people be walking back and forth underneath those doors, garage doors? In and out? Those are why I ask, is because if you have metal, I mean, you put the snow jacks up three feet, if you get a, if you get the sun hitting that roof, that snow is gonna come off that roof, and it's gonna come off quick. And if, you're gonna have the snow overhang the metal roof a lot of the times, and when that wants to come down, I wouldn't wanna be underneath that.
Well, and that's exactly why, beyond, as, as Bill had said, the, the two reasons were the aesthetics, um, which have been a key factor in this whole design for us. which have been a key factor in this whole design for us. But also the coming off of, the snow falling off of the metal roof. And kind of to Bill's point, operationally, it's a lot easier for us to take snow off when we're not in the middle of a storm or, you know, if the snow falls in the middle of a storm, we have to get it out of the bays right then and there versus if it can stay on the roof and if we get a really heavy winter, like we did a few winters ago, they don't happen every year, but if we got one, we have a bucket truck that we can use to safely get up there, just as we do with our current roof. We do have to go up and take snow off of our current roof because it's not to current code. So we do that every year anyway. We'd have to do it less often with this. But operationally, it would allow us not to deal with the snow coming off the roof during a storm when we want the guys out on the road.
And I do agree with the asphalt shingles. It's more residential-like than the metal is. In regards to your siding, are you using corrugated on the side for the metal siding?
It hasn't been decided yet. It won't be a corrugated look. It'll be more of a smooth.
A board and battening type of look.
Yeah, you know, we've had some samples we've looked at, but we're just really starting to get into that. So I don't know decisions really been made, but it won't just be a simple, you know, rib pattern or whatever.
I guess that was my concern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll make much nicer stuff now.
Yes.
And the pitch isn't a steep, steep pitch, so it's, the snow's not going to.
Right. You know, and the metal that we're using is actually what's referred to as an insulated metal panel. So it's metal inside and out with two or three inches of insulation between. So that's actually, you know, your exterior skin, your insulation, and your interior finish on that panel. And it's a much, it's a much better envelope because it's a continuous insulation all the way around.
Thank you.
Tom, can I?
Before we get away from the main building and start talking about the old building, what are you going to do with the space above the offices?
The intent is to remove the wood framing that makes up that office now, so there will no longer be.
No, I'm in the new building, not the old building. In this area where the offices are, there's a lot of attic space.
There is. So we're, for part of it, we're going to be having a mechanical mezzanine. So the air handlers, we have a boil, we have a mechanical room on the slab, which will be used for the boilers and things like that. But to keep with space, we're going to put a attic just above the kitchen and the training room, the electric room, and the mechanical room. There'll be about a 16 by 25 mechanical room in the attic. And the remainder of it will just be unusable attic space.
Unusable because?
Well, two reasons. If we were to make it usable, then we're into a whole different code, and there's some cost associated with that, stairways, and second means of egresses and things like that. So just to get the shape of the building, it'll be a trussed roof with, you know, just space up there. There'll be duckwork and there'll be other things that run through there, but, you know, no real habitable, if you will, or usable space other than that mechanical room.
Okay, thank you.
Those are great questions, Tom. We beat Bill and Turnstone up about that same question.
Can you go right ahead?
So the last couple pages are simply an existing condition plan of the existing garage and just some real rough elevations of the existing building. You know, our focus has really been trying to get the plans developed for the new building. And as those are developed and finished, we'll be, you know, moving our attention and focusing on the renovation of this building. So there's really not much shown here. There's nothing really new shown here right now. It's just simply existing conditions.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes, Peter.
Kyle, is there going to be any changes to the fueling system, the tanks and the pumps and stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's phase three of the project. The tanks are going to stay in the ground. They get inspected on a biannual basis, and they're still in really great shape. There's going to be new pumps because they're quite old, as you know. And we're going to have a canopy over the top of them. The, our goal and hope is to locate the pumps and canopy off of the existing location to somewhere else near there. What that'll do is hopefully we can reduce the impervious footprint because we won't need all of the pavement that's over there because we won't be parking over there anymore. But the bigger factor is when it does come time to replace the tanks, which will have to happen at some point, if we build the canopy and the pumps outside of that envelope, we can replace the tanks without taking down the canopy.
I'm glad to hear it. I have fond memories of those pumps.
How many times at midnight have you been?
We can get one delivered for you. We don't want to hear the stories, Peter.
I have another question.
Go right ahead, Tom.
Could you, that green space to the east of the new building, what is that?
It's wooded area and mostly wetland. You can see the, to the right of that green area, Bill's going to point it out.
No, I'm talking about right next to the building, there's light green in an oval shape. Looks like a football field or something.
Yes, it does.
Originally, the thought was we would do some detention for drainage and things here, but in talking with Kyle and Lori, you know, real estate is fairly valuable here, so we're going to convert our drainage to under pavement detention, and that'll, that green space will no longer be there.
Oh. It's actually a nice spot to leave for a possible future, you know, if you needed an extra bay or whatever. I think it'll still be available for that, but my guess is in the long run, it probably won't be green when we're done.
Actually, it's, you're right, because when we talked about this the other day, I didn't even think about the potential expansion in the future, and that's something that I thought was credible. So I'm glad we've changed our mind on that.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Either Bill or Kyle, the existing salt and sand box that's along Turkey Hill Road, is that going to be relocated or is it going to remain there?
It'll be somewhere in the front. You can see one of the really great features about the project that Bill's team has put together. We have a conceptual landscape plan in the front. Both the old and the new building are going to have a nice array of landscape out front. Somewhere in there, we will locate the sand and salt mixed piles for the residents, as well as we have the wood chip pile out there that residents care for as well.
In looking at the site plan on C2, with the north driveway and the south driveway, I don't see any, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not seeing any lighting that's being put there. Are you reporting to put any lighting along those particular driveways, or is there going to be significant lighting on the property to illuminate those entrances?
I would imagine we would have both.
Okay.
There's lighting at the existing entrance, which you can see it on this plan.
Right.
Hidden beneath some shrubbery. So there is existing lighting out there now. We would put a light at the entrances as well. There's, if you looked in our backyard, we have lots of lights in the backyard now, which there, there's probably one fairly close to the new driveway entrance now anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
But certainly for safety, we would want, want the egresses lit.
Kyle, you are planning to bring this to the planning board, right?
On December 5th, we're going to do the same presentation.
Okay. Because I'm sure they'll have plenty of questions, not that they're going to be able to control what you do, but they're certainly going to want to understand things like the lighting plan, landscape buffers, buffers between your building and residential, and what's going to be done there to protect that integrity of the commercial versus residential and things of that nature.
Exactly. And we had that discussion whether to do this as one meeting with the combined planning board, town council. And in the end, we decided two meetings were better because there's two, like you just mentioned, there's really two different agendas. And they're going to give us some great insight, we're sure.
Okay, thank you.
Not that we haven't provided good insight.
No, of course not.
I can't say anything right.
Oh, no. It's, we're just teasing here. Peter?
Kyle, the police impound, is it staying right where it is?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
That will be part of the plan.
Okay.
If it needs to be relocated, obviously, we would work with the police department to.
There you go.
To, to make sure anything that was needed to stay secure would during the transition.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
And Kyle, you like the teasing, don't you?
I do. I do, actually. And if I could, just a couple of things I forgot to mention. First, we have plenty of handouts of this presentation on the table for anyone in the audience who would like a copy. And then I would just add that Turnstone is currently accepting subcontractors who are interested in working on the project. If you're a contractor interested in working on the project, please contact Turnstone, and they'll put you through their pre-qualification process as they make their selections of the construction team.
I know, yes, Peter?
Sorry to, this is going to go on the website? People will be able to?
This is currently on the website.
Excellent, great, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to say anything that can ask? I'll say, okay. Very good.
What's our construction schedule with this point?
We're anticipating, without being too detailed, because my teammates probably won't want me to say this, but we're targeting April 4th for groundbreaking.
Okay. And it takes about nine months a year?
You thought, you thought you were going to get away on this case.
I'm not quite sure what I had on that schedule. I didn't bring my copy with me, but I believe we had seven months targeted?
Yeah, it was about seven months for the construction of the new building.
For the new building.
And then a couple months for the reconstruction of the existing building. So the optimistic schedule is we'd be done about this time next year, possibly with landscaping and other items going into the spring of 2019.
Nineteen. That makes sense.
Very cool, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, is there any other? Yes, Paul?
And just one other side note, I have started the financing paperwork, and it looks like we're going to probably do a January bond sale with proceeds if the council accepts it in February. So we'll have our money right around the same time we're going to be starting construction.
Okay, run while you can. Before someone else asks.
Can I have just a second? I can go ahead though, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
You guys want more?
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to make another executive decision.
Take a five minute.
Do you need five minutes?
He likes it.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and right after that, I'm going to move up the new business for the National Regional Planning Commission to talk about that, and, because the rest is all code stuff, okay? So five-minute recess. And Bill, would you like to introduce this topic?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. This is item two under new business. This is the National Region Solid Waste Management District's Household Waste Program and the Updated Cooperative Agreement that unites Merrimack with the other District 11 member municipalities that participate in the program. With us this evening tonight is Jill Longvell, and she'll be doing the majority of the presentation. She's the Senior Environmental Planner with the National Regional Planning Commission, otherwise known as the NRPC. She's also the Administrator for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. But sitting to her left, that I wanted to really make the introduction, who is really no stranger to the Town of Merrimack, the former Community Development Director for the Town of Merrimack, has come back home to become the new Executive Director for the National Regional Planning Commission. So I'm very grateful to introduce to the council and to the community of Merrimack, Mr. Jay Minkara. I want to welcome you both, and give Jay the opportunity to introduce himself to some of the people here that may not know you, and then obviously switch it over to Jill so that she can make the presentation regarding our involvement with the National Regional Solid Waste Management District and how we handle household hazardous waste. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead, Jay.
Thank you, Bill. And really, I'm not the expert here.
Yeah, there you go. How quickly we forget, right?
There we go.
Great, there you go.
So Jay Minkara, Executive Director of the National Regional Planning Commission for about a month now. So it really is great to be back, and it's great to be back here and in this building. It's been a long, long time. It actually looks great. I loved, you know, how this has come out. But I really don't have a lot of substance to add to this presentation. I just wanted to have the chance to come along and kind of reintroduce myself. I think I know almost everybody sitting around this horseshoe. So I just wanted to have a chance to come, say hello, and really show my support for the program. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to introduce Steve Dumas, who is here. He is Merrimack's Representative to the Solid Waste District, and I just wanted to point out to all of you the excellent work that he does. He's a really valuable resource to the district, and I appreciate his support for our program. Apologize in advance for my cough. One of my daughters had croup this week, and I've managed to pick up a little of her illness, so I apologize for.
No problem.
Broadcasting on TV. So the Solid Waste District is made up of the communities of Amherst, Brookline, Hollis, Hudson, Litchfield, Merrimack, Milford, Mont Vernon, Nashua, Pelham, and Wyndham. And the district has sponsored household hazardous waste collections for its residents since the 1980s. Just so we're all on the same page, household hazardous waste is anything that is toxic, flammable, corrosive, or reactive. Common items we accepted our collections include oil-based paints, solvents and thinners, lawn and garden products, things like herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers, household cleaners, automotive products, things like antifreeze, oil gas, brake fluid, and mercury-containing devices. We hold six to seven collection events each year. They span from April through November to give people ample opportunity to dispose of their materials. Five of those collection events are held in Nashua at their Public Works Garage. We offer at least one satellite collection event each year. The past two years, we've had two collection events. Those are located in Milford and Pelham to help serve residents at the geographic ends of the region. Residents from any community can attend any event, so Merrimack residents can go to the Nashua event, the Milford event, the Pelham event. We hire a licensed vendor to identify, handle, package, transport, and dispose of all the waste we collect. We're currently utilizing Veolia Environmental Services for this. We also have access to a permanent storage facility at the property in Nashua. This allows us to store waste for up to 90 days, and the benefit of having this is that it reduces our program costs because it prevents us from shipping partially filled The district is funded through three primary sources. The first is user fees. We charge $10 per vehicle. That covers up to 10 gallons or 20 pounds of waste. People can bring more than that amount of waste to the collection event. We just ask them to make an additional donation. We also receive funding from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the form of a grant. That grant funding level is based on the population of the district, the number of events that we hold, the fact that we have access to that permanent storage facility, and DES's budget in any given year. We typically receive between $45,000 and $50,000 a year from that grant. And then the final source of funding is municipal dues. The National Regional Planning Commission manages all aspects of the district. We create outreach materials, and that includes general information on household hazardous waste and its proper disposal. We have product-specific guides. We have flyers on how to properly dispose of paint, flyers on lawn and garden products, on automotive products. dispose of paint, flyers on lawn and garden products, on automotive products. We also produce educational materials on environmentally-friendly alternatives to household hazardous waste. We disseminate these outreach materials through a variety of methods. We use NRPC's website and the municipal websites. We utilize local social media, local cable, press releases, as well as newsletters. We also work with the Greater Nashua Board of Realtors because we know people often attend our collection events when they've either recently purchased a home or household hazardous waste has been left behind, or they're about to sell their house and they want to dispose of their waste before they go. We also answer questions directly from the public. So, if people have questions, they can call us and we'll answer them for them. NRPC also organizes and staffs all of the collection events, which includes attending pre-event meetings with our vendors, providing the staffing at the events, coordinating with local emergency management prior to the events, requesting a police detail for the events, and tallying surveys and receipt books after the events. And we provide general management for the districts. We prepare the district's annual budget. We organize quarterly meetings for the district. We apply for the DES grant. We provide accounting and financial administration for the district. We provide annual reporting. This is something you'll be receiving in the next month. We do an annual report on the district as a whole in terms of participation, how people heard about the collections, what types of material they brought. We also do reporting specific to each town. So, you'll get the district's report and a Merrimack-specific report. We facilitate the vendor bid process and provide contractual oversight to our vendor. We work with the vendor to develop operations and safety plans. We manage the permanent storage facility in Nashua. And we also network with other household hazardous waste programs across the state to share ideas and best practices. The district provides a tremendous asset to the region because it allows residents to safely dispose of their hazardous waste in a timely manner. It also serves a significant and growing number of households. In 2015, we had 1,696 households participate in our collection events. In 2016, that jumped to 1,736. And I'm still in the process of calculating our households from this year. Our last collection event was November 6th. But, just based on the number of vehicles that have come through, I am sure that we've exceeded our 2016 levels. Excuse me. We're also seeing an increase in the amount of waste that we're collecting. In 2015, we collected 85,154 pounds of waste, and that jumped to 93,385 pounds in 2016. We know that when hazardous waste isn't properly disposed of, either in the trash, in the ground, down a storm drain, it poses harm to human health, to waller quality, to wildlife. We also know that it's a public health risk. There are over 2 million human poisonings annually, and of those, over 50% are children ages six and under. And the most common source of poisoning is household products. In addition to the environmental benefits of participating in the district, there are also financial benefits. For the amount that Merrimack pays in its municipal dues, it would be challenging for the town to put on a single collection event each year. By being part of the district, you have access to six to seven collection events each year. You have access to that permanent storage facility in Nashua, which reduces costs, receive a higher grant funding rate from DES than you would if you had a program just to your own town. And while Steve does a fantastic job, essentially, the work is done for you. It makes it a lot easier for the town. There are also regulatory benefits. We know that those 93,385 pounds of waste would end up somewhere. And if it weren't for hazardous waste collections, they would likely end up in your transfer station, which is not permitted to take this material. We also know that the Household Hazardous Waste Program can help with compliance with your MS4 permit. The city of Nashua utilizes the HHW Collection Program as one of its best management practices in its MS4 reporting. We are in the process of wrapping up a multi-year process to develop a cooperative agreement with the district under RSA 149M. It simply puts the district's current practices into writing. So, it outlines the parties to the agreement. It talks about the purpose and operations of the district, the responsibility of district members, and the district's organizational structure. It also defines the relationship between NRPC and the district. It outlines the terms of use for the permanent storage facility in Nashua, and it describes the responsibilities and benefits of communities who host the HHW collections. You may be asking, doesn't the district already have a cooperative agreement? The answer to that is yes and no. We do have district agreements dating back to 1983 for some of our members, including Merrimack. However, we have no indication that these were actually ever lawfully voted upon. And furthermore, the original-
That was before RAS.
Exactly. The original district was created under a planning provision of RSA 149M that no longer exists. It was never intended to create a district or an entity similar to what we have today, which is one that simply runs household hazardous waste collections. And furthermore, not all of our current members were parties to that original 1983 agreement. So, we felt it was important to develop a new agreement that really gets at the intent and purpose of the district today and includes all of its members. We developed this cooperative agreement with the legal oversight of Attorney Bernie Waugh, who represents the district. So, I've been meeting with communities across the region, starting over a month ago. I have two left after tonight. And I just wanted to point out again that while the signing of the cooperative agreement marks a big milestone for us in terms of getting this developed, really doesn't mark any change in our day-to-day practices. It simply puts into writing what we've been doing. As I mentioned, we just wrapped up the collection season for 2017, and I will be getting your town reports and the district reports out shortly. But, I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have about the program.
Peter?
I'm just curious, when you do an event, how many cars do you actually get?
It depends on the event. Our August, October, and November events are typically our largest events, and we can get upwards of 350 vehicles at those events. We do offer one Thursday collection every year to accommodate people who work on the weekends. And that's usually a smaller event, somewhere between 150 to 200 vehicles. But, our larger events are well over 300.
Other questions? Bill?
Yeah, just a question from the materials that you gave me, Jill. One of the things that I noticed is that Merrimack's participation in 2016 was 211 households, which represented 12% participation of a district member within the program. Do you know how many pounds of material were collected from Merrimack residents during that period by any chance?
I don't know. One of the reasons that the Household Hazardous Waste Collection operates in a financially efficient manner is that everybody's waste gets aggregated together. So, I get a survey when people pull in, says, "I am a Merrimack resident. I represent three households." But, once they go through the garage, we don't segregate waste by municipality. So, unfortunately, I can't tell you the volume that came from Merrimack specifically.
But again, you collected, what was it, 85? Was it, did I hear that right? It was 85,000 pounds roughly?
That was in 2015. In 2016, it was 93,385 pounds.
Okay.
And I would assume that it's relatively representative to your participation.
Yeah, so you figure 10, you know, with 12% participation, just let's make it even 10%. So, that's 9,400 pounds of hazardous materials that didn't go through our facility illegally. It actually was responsibly brought to Nashua, which had a significant impact with how we manage our waste program down at the transfer stations.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Tom?
Just out of, excuse me, just out of curiosity.
I have to make sure I say for the person who types up the notes.
Back in your slide talking about why is the district important, you have a bunch of bar graphs. And somehow in 2011, 2012, the number seems to have dropped off somewhat dramatically when you look at that. I'm just wondering if you have any idea what was going on that caused less in that time period?
See if I can bring you back there. I don't know year to year what influences it. We do suspect that participation-
One more.
One more, here we go.
There.
We do know that participation is driven, as I mentioned, a lot by the real estate market and how frequently people are buying and selling houses. I can't tell you how many people come through with a truckload of material that's been left behind for them. So, I don't know how much of that was the housing market. I would suspect that was a good amount of it, just the economy recovering. I do know, and I don't think it was that year, but just weather events affect us as well. As I mentioned, our October and November events are usually our largest. And there was that one year that we had the Halloween storm.
Snowtober.
Everybody's power was out and we had a collection event two days later. We can't reschedule, you know, just because we had the vendor there. And we had a dramatic drop in participation overall that year. So, I can't tell you any given year what caused it, but I do know that our trends are heading upwards.
Clearly heading upwards. It just seemed kind of extreme to have those two years drip off, dip off that much. Didn't know whether there was any obvious we weren't doing or we only did three collections that year or something like that.
No, our collection events have remained, the number of events we've done have been consistent through this, through this chart here.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie?
Is there someplace where you have published what materials you would suggest people bring?
Yes, we do. We have that information on our website. And all of the municipalities that participate have links to our website. We also try to include common items that we collect in our press releases, so people have a sense of what they can bring there. Your annual reports for your town, we provide an overview and we include that information there as well. But, I've been bringing this up with all the communities I've met with. If there are other outreach methods that you think we should be using that we're not, we're more than happy to add them to our list of how we reach out to people. So, please let me know.
I just had a little piggyback question.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, just a little piggyback question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Does, do things have to be labeled?
No. Obviously, if there's labels on it, leave it on there. But, if you have an unknown material, we would certainly take it. I guess I would, if it's really unknown and it looks very, very old, if things crystallized on it, I would be hesitant to tell you to pack that in your car and truck it to the event. And we laugh, but we have people who have cleaned out barns and garages with materials that really should not have been transported to hazardous waste collection. So, if there's any concern about what the material is and it's truly unknown and you think it looks old, I would advise you to contact your fire department or your police department. I don't know if their representatives still here that, from fire and police that would want to add to that. But, if it's, if it's something like an old paint can, you know it's paint, but it's, the label's off, certainly feel free to bring it. One of the reasons we've chosen our vendor, Veolia Environmental Services, is that they're a really top-notch, highly qualified hazardous waste vendor. They have fantastic staff, chemists in the fields, who are able to test materials that are unknown on-site and make sure that they're handled in a safe way. So, we definitely can accommodate unknowns, but just use your discretion as you're transporting them.
Peter?
You're talking about outreach, and I don't know if I missed it. Do you guys ever go on the road and let's say come to the Merrimack transfer station with a vehicle that people can, you know, bring their household waste materials there?
We don't. So, you're talking about like doing collection events outside of?
Yeah, out of, it's in Nashua all the time. I know that our waste, our transfer station, they're great. They post it and it's always a great, they're good at reminding everybody. But, I didn't know if, you know, 12%, it'd be great if you could get that number up. I'm sure we all agree, but just wondering if you guys would go on the road?
As I mentioned, we do hold satellite collection events. We try to do them more geographically dispersed to help people in the far eastern and far western portions of our region. If Merrimack was interested in hosting an event, that would be something that would be up to the district members to decide on. NRPC simply is the staffing. So, it would be the representatives like Steve who would, who would vote on that. We do, I would say, we do try to limit the number of events that we do outside of Nashua, simply because when we're not at Nashua, we cannot use that storage facility. So, everything has to be shipped at the end of the event. The benefit of being in Nashua is that if we partially fill a drum, it can go into that shed. We're not paying to ship that partially-filled drum. We bring it back out at the next event, fill it, and it reduces our costs.
Gotcha.
So, we try to be judicious in terms of how frequently and where we hold the satellite events. But, that's not to say that we wouldn't do one in Merrimack if the district wanted that.
Any other questions? Okay, so what do you need from us this evening?
We need a signature at some point on that cooperative agreement. If you want to sign it tonight, that's fantastic, and I will certainly bring it home with us. If you prefer to sign it at a later date, we just are asking that they get signed by the end of the calendar year to help us plan for next year. So-
Okay, I do have a quick question about, it's entered into as of the date the first signatory signs below. Which day shall be the effective date? So, is the signatory on an individual basis per district?
So, we've already had other municipalities sign. Merrimack would actually be the ninth community to sign at this point. So, it would be the effective date of that first community, which was the city of Nashua, back in September.
Okay.
And I would add to that, too. Once I have all 11 municipalities' signatures, I will send the town a fully executed copy with everybody's, everybody's signature page.
And the authorized representative?
Town manager.
Well, that's what I'm, can I ask the question first? Would either be acceptable, town council chair or town manager?
Yes, either one.
Either be acceptable. Okay, because not, I would prefer to have Eileen do it, just because I don't have an official for, you know, I could sign this, but it's a, it's got holes punched in it. So, if we have a motion, I would like to be able to have the town manager be the signatory, please.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with the National Region Solid Waste Management District Household Hazardous Waste Program pursuant to whatever RSA is applicable, and that we authorize either the town manager or her proxy to sign the document to perfect the agreement.
And I would like to add, prior to the end of this calendar year, because that's when you need it, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good amendment.
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. Any further discussion? Yes, Tom?
Thank you. I didn't realize we were actually going to make motions on this. The cover letter from Kyle, or the letter from Kyle to Eileen and Paul suggests that there's an attached explanation of the cost factors involved, none of which I found. So, I'm wondering what the cost factors are that we would be entering into with this agreement.
Are you looking for your municipal dues?
If that's what's related to this agreement, or is that just the NRPC's municipal dues?
The Solid Waste District is a distinct entity from NRPC. So, the dues that you pay to NRPC are not the same as the dues you pay to the Solid Waste District. The two overlap somewhat in terms of municipalities, but they're not identical. So, in FY18, Merrimack paid $12,168 in dues to the Solid Waste District.
Fiscal year 18?
Fiscal year 18.
Which, which ends June 30th? Okay.
That's correct. Yes, our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30th.
Okay. And, but, but that's not what this cooperative agreement necessarily is signing us up for, or is?
The cooperative agreement under RSA 149M cannot bind you to pay your dues. It really is just trying to, for lack of a better word, put together some sort of documentation that puts our current practices into writing. The municipal dues that each municipality pays are voted on by the district representatives, and of course, they would have to be approved by your town. You're not, RSA 149M can't compel any town to pay.
It doesn't bind you to the quote.
It does not, no. It's a cooperative agreement. It's less legally binding than a true solid waste district, which is a totally different RSA. It's very, it's very loosely formed.
Okay. I mean, that, that number and the number that shows up in this email of 13, 315 for an increase for next year are not very onerous to me. It's $1,167. But, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what we stand and what- But, uh, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what we stand and, and what part of all of this we're doing. Because it sounded like through some of this description and discussion, that Merrimack's participation has gone up, therefore its dues are going to go up, or something like that.
Um, everyone's dues went up from FY18 to FY19. Uh, there's a number of reasons for that. The program is growing. As I mentioned, we have an increased number of households. With that, an increased volume of waste that's coming through, and as a result, our vendor fee has increased over the years. Um, we've also had more administrative costs. We moved from six to seven collection events each year. Because the program is growing, we used to have one or two NRPC staff members and the rest volunteers at the collection events. The district voted to have it completely staffed by NRPC and eliminate volunteers for liability and reliability reasons. We've also had some legal fees and staff costs associating with getting the cooperative agreement in place. And the municipal dues have been flat since FY11. They really just haven't kept pace with the growth of the program. So, we did, the district did vote to increase the municipal dues in FY19. Um, we were very mindful of the cost increase. We know that budgets are tight. We tried to make sure that the formula to allocate dues to each municipality was done in a fair manner, so that no one municipality took a, a bigger share of the hit. So, it's, um, it's, it's all done equally. Merrimack's fees are not increasing because their participation increased. If that answers your question?
Yeah.
Paul, would that, does this money come under the transfer station?
Yes, it's in the transfer stations budget.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we still have a motion on board. Any other questions related to it? None. Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Nothing. Okay, 7, 0, 0. Very good. So, we will have the town manager send that off to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sure it'll be done very soon.
Thanks, Ben.
Right, Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, now the dry part of the evening. We're going back to the public hearing. And we're going to, yeah. Okay, we have a lot, and I remember, there's a lot in this public hearing because we had to double up, because there were no, when we switched over from October, November, was the switch quick, I'm sorry, yeah, October, November. There's a quick turnaround, and we couldn't have the public hearing the next week. Okay? So, we had to put it to this meeting. Okay, chapter 163, solid waste facility.
90 is the first one, that was quick after 81. You don't want to go by directions?
Okay, hold on. I'm using this thing, that's why I'm...
I don't know what that is.
This is the schedule that everybody received.
Back at the beginning.
Back at the beginning, of the public hearing.
I don't have something back.
Well, everybody got one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I got it.
It was actually a nice tool.
That's, that's why I was using it. Okay, so let me just review this for a second here. Actually, they're not all on here. Because the public hearing I have listed here is 9102, 119, which is the green, the bottom. The chapter 81, 163, 167, 169, 183 is not listed under public hearing. Do you see what I'm saying? Paul?
The agenda's all listed. That's the only one that counts as the agenda.
And they're, and they're supposed to be...
That's what I'm saying. That was supposed to be a public hearing, 81.
Yeah, they're on the agenda for a public hearing, so.
81, 90, 102, 123, 130, 136.
Oh, I see, okay, never mind. It's integrated, that's why I had a problem.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll go according to the agenda then. Okay, so, uh, 90 is alarm systems. Well, we have to choose one or the other. I'll choose what's on the agenda.
We have to go by the agenda, because that's the only thing we have to officially be here doing.
But the numbers are the same.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
You meant the order.
That's all it is, it's just the order. It's just the order. Okay, so, chapter 90, alarm systems. Any discussions?
The only change we made was the one that was recommended, to add the definition for fire chief and police chief at the front, and then take out the chief of police or his or designee. So, we made that change as recommended at the last meeting.
Yeah, so you'll notice it's cleaned up a lot as far as the titles throughout. I mean, it constantly talks about the police chief and the fire chief, and it used to say, chief of police and the chief of the fire department, or their designee. So, it just was a lot more extroverbage, harder to read.
Right.
We just added a definition.
And you added a definition up front, so that, yeah.
Who was that? Was Chief Carrier calling from the back of the room? Just repeat that again.
Uh, just for clarification, we added definitions of, uh, the police chief and the fire chief, and consistently, we've changed that through all the chapters that you're going to review today, so you'll see that through them. You have a definition of police chief and fire chief, so the and/or designee and all that has been eliminated through just about most of the chapters that we discussed at our last, uh, meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any no questions? Okay, I'd like to open the public meeting at 7:45.
Say what?
I'm trying, it's 9:45. Wishful thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no public here, so I'm going to close it. I'm, it's still 9:45. Did you think of something?
No, I just didn't know. No, I'm, I'm okay.
Madam Chair, move chapter 90 to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Keenick. Move consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, here we go. 6, 0, 1, Tom Thornton abstaining. Wathie Ken. Finley, did you?
Yeah, I, um, I'm just quickly going through this paragraph again. If somebody has a false alarm, whatever the, the lead-up to this paragraph, it says they will be, they shall pay the town Merrimack response fee. Will you always charge that fee?
We've never had the issue of needing to, because its definition of alarm is the same exact alarm type. So, if they have a, uh, a false system that has to do with smoke detector number 223, I need multiple problems with smoke detector 223 according to this ordinance, not the whole system. So, they could have multiple different problems with the system, and they're all different, so they're, each one is considered one time.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is, those people want to fix them anyhow, right? Because when we had this discussion about 15 years ago, it was, uh...
Sorry about that. It was, um, people, that people would have multiple problems, but it was always, you know, it was the attempt to do the fix, and we weren't whacking them with a penalty, because I just, I just wanted to make sure that was still the case.
Yeah, the issue is not to penalize somebody for having a system, especially if, you know, some systems get older and they start to malfunction. We, uh, through our fire prevention office, go through and do inspections. Each, uh, facility is required to do an annual, uh, fire alarm and an annual sprinkler inspection. Those results come to us, and if we see issues, we work with them to get those back. If, if some of them are costly, uh, to repair, then we provide them with a works, uh, uh, process that will say, we can start at this date, and depending on the cost, if it costs 20, $30,000, it might go out a period of, of a couple of years before they finally get the total system put back, because the object's not to put anybody out of business, is to make it safe as possible.
Right.
So, they may add a couple of smoke detectors in during this time, okay, for a company, but we don't close them down, per se, because that's, that's not our intent.
Yep, no, great. I didn't think so, I just...
Yeah, never has been, so.
Okay, chapter 102, blasting and explosives.
No changes to that chapter.
Correct. Any questions by the council? I'm going to open the public hearing at The rush is on. We're going to close the public hearing still at 9:46.
Madam Chair, move chapter 102 to consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? 6, 0, 1, Tom Thornton abstaining. Chapter 119. Do I have 119 here?
123.
123.
Chapter 123, we added the definition for police and fire chief.
And it does make it read better, so.
Any questions from the council? I'd like to open this at 9:47. No, I'm sorry, 9:48. Do have to move it ahead, you know. Okay, and I'd like to close it again at 9:48. Motion?
Madam Chair, move chapter 123 to the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton. Does that mean you're going to vote on it?
I am.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. 7, 0, 0. Okay, 130.
We, uh, added the definition for fire chief.
And this is fireworks, by the way.
And we added the definition for police chief. There was a lot of discussion about, um, taking them away, or, or...
130 dash four.
Um, penalties. We, we left the wording alone, because as you read it, it makes sense if, if you read it again, um, but we're open to suggestions. So, we left 130 dash four. Uh, no, we didn't make any changes to that language.
That's when we just, it was not making sense, because we talked about a lot, I think we were talking about a lot of different items at one time, and then I think Councilor Rossell came at the end and said that the key point here was, it says, "Or offered for sale in violation of this chapter," which puts it in violation of this chapter only, which makes it sound correct.
That's what I thought when we were talking about it.
It did, that's the one, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to open this at 9:49. Close it at 9:49. Go ahead, Bill.
Madam Chair, move chapter 130 to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Keenick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. 7, 0, 0. 136, food service establishments.
Uh, no changes from the first read.
Uh, someone's not, Paul, did you?
Sorry, no changes from the first read.
Thank you. I'm going to open at 9:50, open the hearing. Saying no, close at 9:50.
Madam Chair, move chapter 136 to the consent agenda.
Bill Boyd made the motion, second. Peter Albert.
I'll ask a quick question.
Absolutely.
Chief, is this one of the ones that we were saying might need to be changed, or is it?
This was, we decided not to do any changes this time, because the state of New Hampshire is changing multiple regulations that we're just coming, uh, to understand at this point in time, and, uh, the new health officer has started on Tuesday, and, uh, so that is one of the primary projects, is to take this, uh, chapter and, and put it with the new changes in the health code, to make sure that the codes, the code numbers, because there's a lot of changes in there, are corresponding with each other, and any fines or penalties that occur are, are enforced and identified by the state.
Okay, so we're just kind of passing this through?
We're kind of passing this through.
Because we expect to see it again in three to six months or something.
That's correct.
Right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6, 0, 1, Tom Thornton abstaining. 163, which is solid waste facility.
The only changes, there was no changes from the initial reading. The only change is just cleaning up the language to say solid waste and, and transfer station.
As opposed to dump?
As opposed to dump.
And you go to Public Works to get a transfer station decal?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to open at 9:51 the hearing. Saying no, and close at 9:51 still.
Madam Chair, move chapter 163 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Finley Rothaus. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? 7, 0, 1, I'm sorry, 6, 0, 1, Tom Thornton abstaining. 167, stormwater management standards.
I believe this is, no changes.
Right. Okay, open the public hearing at 9:52. Don't see a rush. Close it at 9:52.
Madam Chair, quick, Chair, a quick question for Kyle.
Ken?
This'll be quick, Kyle. Are we, are we anticipating any changes in here at some particular point as it relates to the whole MS4 stuff?
Yeah, following the, the new permit, when it's finally implemented, we expect major changes to this chapter.
So, probably next year we might be talking, or 2019, we might be talking about it?
If, if it goes as scheduled, our notice of intent period begins, uh, June 30.
June 30, that's right.
Of 2018.
18.
That's a six-month notice of intent period, so following that is when it would occur.
Okay, so, we'll be seeing this again very soon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Madam Chair, move chapter 167 to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second.
Is he still in the public hearing, or?
No, uh, no, I closed it. It was 9:52. Um, motion made by Bill Boyd, second by?
Second.
Peter Albert.
He's there, he's alive.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6, 0, 1, Tom Thornton abstaining. Okay, 169, streets and sidewalks.
No, uh, no changes, as written.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing at 9:54. Close the hearing still at 9:54. Questions? Anyone?
Madam Chair, move chapter 169 to the consent agenda.
If, if we're not making any changes, what are we doing with the consent agenda? We're just kind of affirming?
Correct.
That'll be the final?
That'll be the final.
I know, but if there's no change, then there's no change. There's nothing to vote on, there's nothing realistically, unless we just need to decide at the bottom.
We're just accepting it's final, right.
Because they say at the top they were amended at a certain date. We're not amending anything, so it really doesn't...
That's a good point.
Need anything at all.
Well, it should be, it shouldn't be amended, you're right. It should be reviewed.
Well, this one doesn't say it's amended this year, but...
It should be like, reviewed, officially reviewed, right?
Yeah, well, it's got a space for you to sign it, so.
Well, that's in the bottom, on the side of the table.
Authenticated.
Right.
Okay, we're just authenticating.
Right.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay, um...
Give me a second, still. I'll second. The page's on, you can read it.
We're still on streets and sidewalks, right, okay. Bill Boyd and Tom Thornton, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 7, 0, 0. 174, which is swimming pools.
Um, after further review, and, um, I know we kicked this can a lot...
We, uh, that was a...
Down. Um, we've found that the, uh, swimming pool ordinance is no longer needed, because it's actually in the town building code, international building codes that we follow through our, yes, through our building codes. So it actually is through our building ordinance that the swimming pools are covered. So we just need to basically take this ordinance out and say either no longer needed or...
So we officially delete the...
Officially delete the ordinance.
We could do what Kyle suggested, put this language...
We, that's what we could do. We could leave this language here that was given by Chief Courier.
Oh, Chief Courier, sorry.
Okay, so clarify for me the motion you need.
Basically to, the ordinance is no longer needed. It is the recommendation to discontinue the current swimming pool ordinance. And note for the history, the following. The removal of this provision of the town of Merrimack ordinance, chapter one seventy-four, by town council on this date, as the ordinance was replaced by state of New Hampshire regulations and also adopted within the town of Merrimack building codes.
So moved.
There you go. Second by...
Second.
Peter Albert. Nice. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven zero zero.
Just to follow up on Tom's comment when we first started with this and we kind of went around with it. I did, we did call a lot of communities. And actually, this, you started with kind of a wildfire through a lot of communities because a lot of people are following the state code that we're following, but they still have ordinances on the book. And now they're all going back to have those removed because they're at some points conflicting. That's which ours was. That's why we ended up removing it. So now it doesn't conflict at all with the state code that we've adopted through our building codes.
It's the first reading. You haven't done it yet.
Thanks.
According to this, it's the public hearing. All right. Give me a minute. Okay, one eighty, that's where I'm confused. I got to just go with this. One eighty-three, vehicles and traffic?
There are several changes that were proposed throughout this, to add roads and new stop signs. Also to, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. Yeah, to add roads in section thirty-one with stop signs. Also to take out the one-way traffic during school hours on Madeline Bennett, as well as...
McCallen.
McCallen, sorry. McCallen, sorry. It's getting a little late. And also there is a...
Fuss is on the road, so what happened?
Yeah. There are two other ones that were proposed by the chief of police and her division. One is, and she could talk to these better than I can, so I'm going to ask her to discuss these two changes that she's making. Woodbury Street.
We're actually, right, currently Woodbury Street. If you're going north on Danny Webster Highway, passing Central Fire, you cannot turn left onto Woodbury Street. What we have found lately is, and I think that, I'm not sure, I wasn't here when that was originally erected. And I'm not sure what the purpose was, but after speaking with Kyle, I believe it was a line of sight issue. Certainly, the increased traffic on the road has slowed cars down just by the nature of how many cars, the volume of cars that are there. Also, what we've found, two other things. The traffic is stopping for Buckley's Bakery and Buckley's Restaurant in the same, in twenty feet afterwards as Woodbury Street. So we're allowing cars to stop for those two locations to turn left into their establishments. But if you travel twenty feet further, we're not allowing them to travel on Woodbury Street. Also, a consequence of not being able to turn left on Woodbury Street if you're going northbound is they're cutting through Buckley's. They're also cutting through Tire Town, which is a dirt, it's private, it's a dirt parking lot. And they're also traveling through Connell's Plaza. However, there is a light at Connell's Plaza, so it's not against the law because there is a traffic control device. It still causes increased traffic where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic during, especially during those school hours. And our thought also is that if you're allowing people to turn left on a Woodbury Street, as we all know, there's a large volume of traffic at rush hour in the afternoon. Some of those cars may be, when having, when they have the opportunity, may be going up Woodbury Street. So that might alleviate some of that traffic on Danny Webster Highway in the evening commute as well. So that is our thought process behind it. And again, I'm not sure what, the full reason other than line of sight was. But again, the traffic is, goes pretty slow through that area through most of the day. So if we're worried about a car turning left onto Woodbury Street, we should also be worried about a car turning left into both Buckley's parking lots.
Kyle?
Thank you. I think that's awesome. I, every time we can take off restrictions like that, I think that's a great thing. I hate putting up stop signs. I hate putting up don't go there type signs. So I would fully support this.
Jackie?
Well, Tom's not going to like this, then.
That's why I was happy to say first.
First of all, I am so grateful for the, all the information on these traffic lights. I thought, oh my gosh, all the data. Who reads a lot? I'm excited about that, that whole thing. That's great. That's going to help a lot. But my quarrel, I think, is with the kids, and it is just about. They really speed through the Connell Shopping Center parking lot. And people are shopping at all those places and trying to pull out. And they really zip through. I was wondering if there would be one lane through the parking lot that could be delineated for through traffic.
Jackie, actually, the next one we're proposing is to help alleviate that problem.
Oh, okay.
And if you, so move that Chief Roy can discuss that one at this time. If everybody's done, we'd be...
That's fine, if you want to respond now.
Because it relates to the exact same roadway. Also, between two PM and three PM, cars are not allowed to turn left onto Danny Webster Highway from Woodbury Street. We're proposing that you eliminate that as well, so cars can stop going through the parking lots when they leave school. They'll be able to turn left onto Danny Webster Highway.
I suppose if you think that will work, that's good.
We're hoping it will work. You know, like, again, the traffic goes much slower through that entire area during those hours because of the volume. So we're hoping that, you know, people use due diligence when they're going through the intersection, when they approach the intersection.
The reasoning, I wasn't part of it, it actually, but I remember hearing the reasons they did it because it was kind of peculiar, is they wanted a clockwise flow of traffic. So if you went down Greec Hill, you could only take a right turn. If you wanted to head north, they wanted you to keep going through, which is also, I think, why they have do not enter from two to three going down McCallen Street. Right, but that was the thought. They wanted to keep the traffic flowing that way. It, the only potential is there's no right and left turn lane at the end, so the potential's at, might back up, which on the surface is not a big deal unless it gets up into McCallen Street and affects bus traffic. And I don't know, I don't know if it will or not, but that's something to pay attention to.
Right, two things. First, you're dating yourself with Greec Hill.
I am an old guy now. I hit that milestone here. I'm old.
And secondly, I think part of the, again, increased traffic, pedestrian traffic, motor vehicle traffic, those, the cars cutting through those, you know, there's a couple do not enter signs. And we've tried to really help out those businesses and try to sit in the parking lots and wait. But the amount of vehicles that come through, we just can't be there all the time. So if that helps alleviate part of that problem...
Which I'm in, I'm in favor of it, for sure, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with this Greec Hill location. Is that Woodbury Street you're referring to, Councilor?
It's Greec Hill and the train stops over the other.
It's before my day.
I haven't heard that term in a while.
There are also two other changes.
I was told this because the guy who owns a chicken farm down below was a Greec Alman. And...
You're showing your...
I probably can't say that anymore, right?
No, you can't.
I didn't know this. I didn't even think about the consequences.
I'll help you stop digging, Councilor Rothaus.
Thank you.
There are two other changes in this chapter. Okay, so the Woodbury Street is removed. And the two to three PM on school days is removed. You're proposing to be removed. Okay.
Chair, just a quick...
Go ahead, Peter.
Well, I got the chief here.
Yep, go for it.
Chief, just FYI, and I'm just thinking about it as we're talking about Woodbury Street. Folks living at the bottom of the hill, just before you hit Buckley's, a couple of them have approached me regarding the speeders of the kids getting out of school. At the end of the day, if you guys could maybe reach out or throw the radar trailer and, or cruiser out there a couple times just to slow them down a little bit.
Absolutely.
I was spoken to about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And they fly through Connell's as well. They go screaming through there when they're coming out of school. The traffic is pretty quick through Connell's, so this change would be beneficial.
The, I'll just bring up Sunset Drive. You remember the boat that was parked in the right-of-way and things? So we're asking for that also to be, still be included from the end of Sunset Drive to forty degrees north of the pump station, the fence, to have a public right-of-way and vehicles, you know, no parking marked there. And the last thing is the intersection of Babu'sak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett Lane.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
And to be perfectly honest with you, I'm going to pass the buck to Director Fox.
Oh, this is official.
Can't see so good. So at the first reading, this, we had a fair amount of discussion on it, on this intersection. The reason we included it in the proposed changes to the code was because in practical terms, we are maintaining the signal now. When the lights go out, we replace them. I was asked to go back and look and see if it met traffic warrants. So I spoke with Matt Chevannell at the school district, and he forwarded to me, which I think you guys have a copy of, the traffic study that was performed back in 2006, which was after the signals were already installed. But the, the traffic engineer who did the study did say it met warrant number four, which was peak traffic volumes.
Three.
Three? I'm sorry. Maybe it was three. I have it tapped here.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
I can. Warrant three, correct. It was fourth on the list, that's why. Because there's one A and one B. So, so from a professional traffic engineer, it does meet a traffic signal warrant. One of the conclusions in the report, though, did say that, did recommend that the timing should be changed to what we normally experience at a traffic signal, which is, well, I'll talk about what's there first. Right now, the signal is split up as a four-phase signal, meaning each of the four legs gets their own turn individually, which is counter to what we all experience at every other signal in our normal lives. So the recommendation is, is from the traffic engineer was to put it back as a two-phase signal, where phase two and four and phase one and three would occur at the same time. But as a caveat to that, add a sign to the mast arms that says the left turn yield on green sign that you see on traffic signals. What that, what that does is it certainly increases the efficiency of the intersection. Because when you have each of the four phases on their own schedule, you're doubling your all-red time and your yellow times for your delays. So it's certainly adding a lot of delay to the signal as it sits today. And, you know, everyone who's, who uses it now is familiar with it. But anyone who comes upon it not familiar with it, I'm sure looks at it crazily like, why?
This is going to be broken. It's not working right.
Right, exactly. In talking with, with Mr. Chevannell about implementing it, he was actually in favor of switching the timing to a normal pattern. We did talk about timing of when to do that, and I suggested that it might be appropriate to do it after this school year. So that, you know, the current parents who are at the school wouldn't have to shift gears mid-year. That's my recommendation to the council is that we do accept it as a, as a town traffic signal. But in the, in June, after school lets out, we put the, the left turn yield on green signs and change the signal timing.
Did you, Finley, did you have a question?
Yes.
Jackie? Go ahead.
Doug, you first.
The, I know a number of our lights on Danny Webster Highway have that thing that looks like cameras, but I guess it's just sensing traffic stacking and will defer to the heavier, you know, lane for a longer period. Is that correct?
The, so the three intersections that we redid in 2012, those are actually cameras. And what they do is they replace the signal loops that are in, that are traditionally in intersections. So those three intersections now no longer have traffic loops in the pavement. And the camera that you see up top is actually what's detecting the traffic on the legs. So it does nothing more than replace the traffic loops.
Right, so it's allowing traffic, you know, it's letting traffic flow through because there's traffic there, but not on the other areas. So it's... Can, is that, it's probably expensive to do that? Is that something that could be done? Because my, my only thought is that, that intersection, I would think predominantly is a left turn heading east on Babu'sak Lake Road, where the road normally turns. So I didn't know, and I might not be accurate because I'm just sensing that that's the bulk of the traffic of coming down Babu'sak into town or vice versa. So whereas constantly turning left over traffic, is that going to be a problem, I guess?
I don't, I don't think it'd be a problem. We wouldn't need to add the camera because there's currently traffic loops in the pavement. So the, the cars are already being detected by the loops. It's just reprogramming the signal to give the appropriate times.
Right. I think the other, the other thing I thought it would shorten, stop times with the camera thing. That's what I was thinking.
No, because, because it's, it does the exact same thing that the traffic loops do.
All right.
The, the reason we're going to that model, as we do paving projects, when we grind up the road like we just did on Babu'sak and Danny Webster, when you grind up the existing pavement, of course, you grind up the loops. And there's a period of time where, until you put the new pavement down, you can't put the new loops in, so they're on timing. So now with the cameras, the next time, ten years from now, fifteen years, whenever we redo those intersections again, we won't have to deal with the loops anymore. So that's the reason we won't, with the cameras. But they do the same thing as the loops.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle.
Jackie?
Yes. I love that, that light, the way it is. I sit there for some minutes every day. And it works like a charm. And I rarely sit there for even a minute. Not even a minute, I don't know, I'm not anywhere close to. Like, honestly, I think my average wait is probably fifteen seconds. Not if it isn't drained. I really like it because then you can go, you know, every which way, like Continental Boulevard is.
It is a quick light.
It's very quick.
And I think that's because the loops are working as well as they are.
Oh, yeah.
And I go through that intersection more than I like to believe, too. And while I sometimes do get frustrated by the fact that I'm waiting for two or three cycles of other phases to go through, usually it goes through fairly quickly. And because I'm coming back, like Finley was suggesting, and wanting to take a left and continue on Babu'sak Lake Road to town, that could be problematic trying to take a turn across Meeting House.
No questions?
My question, my question, excuse me. And so I'm just concerned about that traffic leg.
Sure.
I understand the other ones. I don't know how many people are going straight through down Babu'sak Lake into the school. I'm sure beginning and end of school days, they are. But, but I've been used to now the, the current signaling. I'm not convinced the change would be a better thing, but...
Yep. My observation has it, the prevailing is the turn left.
I've been driving that loop since I got my driver's license. And I can remember when Question Road was a yield sign, and then it turned into a stop sign. And I can remember before they put school in. It's very dangerous. People do pick up speed coming down the hill from Bambi Drive to Madeline Bennett to try to beat that light. I have seen several times when I'm sitting there to take a right to go back up towards my parents' house in Great Stone, people flying off on the Question Road to try to beat that green light. It's, it's always been, I've had friends that took me home way back in the day when it was a stop sign, and I'm yelling at them, it's a stop sign, it's a stop sign, it's a stop sign. And they're trying to fly through the stop sign. It's a very dangerous intersection, I think, to run it as a regular light. Just my opinion of driving that for over, don't want to say, many years now. But that, coming down that hill and taking the left to continue on Babu'sak Lake Road with the traffic that comes up at night off... with the traffic that comes up at night off of McQuestion Road, it, it could be troublesome and, you know, I, I, I just foresee problems at that intersection. And going to my parents' house on a Saturday, or, or a Sunday, or even at night, very few cars are going into the middle school unless it's a school event. There are some. But going straight off of Babu'sak Lake Road into Madeline Bennett is, is not the issue. Or even taking left off of McQuestion into the school is not the issue.
So what are you saying? You should stay as is?
I'm thinking, uh, to change it, I think that we're gonna, might see some problems and, and some serious accidents there because of the way people are driving through McQuestion and, and on Babu'sak Lake Road going from Bambi Drive to Madeline Bennett. It's just my, my opinion. I'm not a traffic study guy. I just know from driving it since, like I said, for the last
Forever.
ever years, that it's, it's, it's a very dangerous intersection. It was a very dangerous intersection when there were stop signs there. When McQuestion had the stop sign, people would blow through the stop sign. I'd seen near misses.
Well, I don't, we don't have to decide on the, the timing. It's just the acceptance of the street light.
Correct. The, the heart of the proposal is to accept the street light formally, um, which would help the police department enforce any violations there.
Right.
I know. That's what I'm thinking.
I, I, I would just add one note to, to the conversation. Um, the Chestnut Hill subdivision, which is approved, uh, we don't know when it'll get built, but that's gonna add seventy, seventy-six houses, um, to Madeline Bennett at the top of the hill. So while traffic capacity isn't an issue now, it could become a bigger issue once that subdivision is built.
Which can be addressed at that time.
And, and to the points that were made, um, the, the signal discussion really is focused on traffic capacity. And because it's a relatively light traffic intersection, it does function okay with the four phases. It would function better with two phases, but it's certainly not required.
Is that, is that moving forward, that project?
They have all their approvals.
We hope they go forward. I mean, part of, part of their approval was to fix the sewer line there.
For the school, right.
Kyle, so, we had a big discussion last time about whether the warrants were met or not. You're saying that this traffic study came after the fact? Cause I never heard that warrants were met by that light. And in fact, when they put it in, my understanding was that there were no warrants that it met. And so it's kind of interesting that you found a traffic study that suddenly says that, sure, it met one of the warrants, one out of eight.
Right. The, the study was done in two thousand and six, which I believe was after the lights were installed. It, it makes note of that. Uh, some of the warrants are based on stop sign conditions. So some of the warrants, they couldn't even check because it was a signalized traffic intersection when they did the, the traffic study.
I, I do, I do remember that they didn't have it at first. They did the study and they were, because they worried about the light not being accepted. And I knew there was one warrant that it met for one hour of time. That was it.
Yeah.
And it was the high-peak, um, one. I, I do remember that that happened a number of years ago.
I will say Matt expressed frustration to me when I spoke with him that, um, I guess the traffic engineer, and this is Matt's words, said it would have met the pedestrian volume if, if bicycles were included as pedestrians, which they're not.
Oh, interesting.
That's, that's from, from, from Matt. That didn't show up in the study itself, so I don't have verification of that.
Given that we have an official document that says it meets a warrant, I'll, I'll withdraw my hesitation to accepting it.
Okay. We all set with that? Well, I had a question on page thirty. Maybe this is, I don't need to. But it has McKellwin Street, and there was a crossout. Do we have to do anything with that?
That was one more proposed change that, uh, we asked. So currently, McKellwin Street, if you're coming towards Babu'sak Lake Road, so if you're going north on McKellwin Street from the high school, once you get to the intersection of Woodbury Street and McKellwin Street, between two PM and three PM, between two PM and three PM, you cannot enter. And the point of that, back when that was established, was because there were no sidewalks and the children were leaving the school and walking down the road and travel, vehicles traveling were, you know, in the roadway with the pedestrians. Since that time, there has been the addition of sidewalks. So that alleviates any pedestrian traffic in the roadway. So there's really other, I mean, again, going towards the whole Woodbury Street area, trying to alleviate some of all that traffic. If cars are now allowed, instead of going down to O'Gara Drive to go down McKellwin Street to Babu'sak Lake Road, it could alleviate some of the other congestion in the other areas. And again, also through those parking lots that we've discussed, those private parking lots like Conells Plaza in our town.
So you're suggesting removal of that?
Correct.
Section?
We discussed that last time.
Okay. I hadn't written it down, that's why. And Sunset Drive, had we discussed that as well?
Paul just mentioned it.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry.
That's the boat. That was the picture of the boat.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gotcha.
And I will say, since our, since the efforts, reading our sewer folks did make contact with the resident, and the boat has now moved, and, and he understands our concerns.
Right. Okay, perfect. Okay, we're all set? Okay.
So just a, a quick question. On page nine, Barbie Court is in here twice, once in blue, once in black. And on page, uh, twenty-eight, the, the intersection of Babu'sak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett is in here twice, once in blue and once in black.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, what's the plan?
Page twenty-eight, for example.
The plan is, each should only be in there once.
Oh, okay.
And then on page nine, I'm guessing Barbie Court was out of order alphabetically, and so it got entered again, and we just need to remove the second one?
Yes. We'll make sure that happens.
Thanks.
Okay, cool. Okay, now, I think we're ready to go public, right? Okay, so the public hearing can open at ten twenty-four. Saying none, we'll close it at ten twenty-four.
Madam Jim, move chapter one eighty-three to the consent agenda.
With changes?
With the changes.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by
Second.
Tom Kinnick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining, nothing. Seven, zero, zero. Okay. Now, I believe we are ready now. Moving to new business number three.
How about consent agenda?
Oops, sorry. Thank you.
No legislative updates or town manager's report?
I need to go home. Okay, legislative updates. I'm trying to help. See, that's what happens when you try to move too fast. Obviously, non-town managers' report. Thank you for reminding me, everyone.
I would just like to quickly, uh, state that the DW Highway Clover project that is down by King Cone, the contractor was removing, removing the lane shift on DW Highway on Tuesday, November twenty-first. Final paving of the project will depend on weather and may be pushed to next year. But the regular traffic pattern next Tuesday should be back to normal. And also, uh, would like to welcome Kelly Shamel. She's our new assistant planner. Kelly comes from the State of New Hampshire's Office of Strategic Initiatives, which was recently called Office of Energy and Planning. Kelly joined us about a week and a half ago. We just wanna welcome Kelly to her new position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, Paul. I can't remember. Consent agenda. Do we have to do this individually as well, or do we do it in mass?
Consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
There's been discussion on this. In the past, we have done each one individually. If you wanna move them as a group, you can move them as a group.
Well, I know in the past, we, when we talked about the public hearings and the readings, you wanted us to do individual.
Individual.
But I just couldn't remember, that's all.
If, if there, if nobody wants to pull an item off of one of these and, and talk about it some more,
Okay.
with the lateness of the hour, I'd say for, to help it through.
Perfect. Okay, let's do a motion.
Move the consent agenda.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Kinnick.
Um, I would like to just read into record that there for chapters nineteen, twenty-seven, one eleven, one forty-two, and one ninety-three of the Town of Merrimack Code pursuant to Art, Charter Article Five.
Very good. All the, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, one. Tom Thornton abstaining. Okay, there is no all business. New business, we've already done, number one and two. So we're moving on to consideration of changes to chapter of the Merrimack Town Code first reading. Town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapters. And we will do this individually, one nineteen, one twenty-eight, and one eighty-one, the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article Five.
Chapter one nineteen, um, there is one change. Um, it's one nineteen dash five violations and penalties. Um, we'd like to add the following. For the first offense and fifty dollars, well, we, it reads, a dog, dog
You need your microphone?
It's there.
It's late.
It's keeper of such a dog, a forfeiture of twenty-five dollars. And then we'd like to add, for the first offense and fifty dollars for the second offense, the third and subsequent offenses shall be handled in the Ninth Circuit District Division Merrimack Court.
Why?
That's me. That is how the law reads. Um, so, and, and that is how it's fined out now. So we have a pamphlet that goes out. So you, for your first offense is twenty-five dollars, for your second offense is fifty dollars. And then you must appear in court for your third offense. Uh, so we figured that, that's what we hand out. It'd be best if people could see it in the ordinance as well. For the system, sorry, the code.
What law are you referring to? New Hampshire's state law, or?
Correct. For violations and penalties for running at large.
So there's a state law about penalizing people for numbers of violations?
I'm sorry, not for the running at large. I'm confused on another one. No, that is what our town
Pamphlet.
Correct. It's what our town, uh, code originally came from. So we have always done twenty-five dollars for the first offense, fifty for the second, and going to court for the third. Uh, so that was our, our, our running at large. I'm not sure how it got eliminated from the original town code, but that's what we've charged people for, uh, in the past, not just the twenty-five dollars.
So we're making a code consistent with the pamphlet?
Correct.
Or we could make our pamphlet consistent with the code.
That's so easy.
Why? I'm just curious if it, how often do we end up going to fifty dollars and/or to court? And what does it cost us to get somebody into court?
For different offenses, uh, generally not very often. Uh, but for some people, their dog running at large happens quite frequently. Um, so we do have a couple that have gone to court.
Murphy died many years ago.
So we do have a, a couple in, uh, of dogs in town that have gone to the level of going to court, um, because it's happened so frequently, but it does, it's not a common occurrence.
And, and does that solve the problem, or do we continue?
Once you get, well, the fifty dollars usually solves the problem.
Oh.
Once you get to court, definitely solves the problem.
Okay. But, so, out of curiosity, how much does it cost us to, to pursue the thing for a court case? I mean?
Well, it depends, um, it depends on the circumstances, too. You know, if, if there's a dog that's running at large and it's being a nuisance, I mean, there's different, you know, so there's different types of running at large. So, you know, it, it takes the prosecutor's time to prepare. It takes the animal control officer's time to prepare the court documents to go to court. So, you know, if you're asking for a number, I don't have one.
No, but I'm, uh, uh, the fact that you're saying it's taking several hours of people's time, that we're paying fairly good salaries to
Correct.
to chase this down, to take a dog to court.
Correct.
Or the owner of a dog to court.
Yeah, we don't generally take the dog, but it's good.
But you could.
Yeah.
So I mean, if, if that's what you're currently doing, and people are comfortable with that and whatnot, I guess I'm not gonna argue about it too much. But I just wanted to make sure the council's aware that, well, there's been discussions about how much are we chasing people for dog licensing and things of that nature? And I'm just wondering if this is getting to the level of being onerous or not to other people. It seems like it to me, yeah.
If I could just actually clarify, and this was my fault, um, I, if I could have time to look at the state statute to make sure that it doesn't indicate that that's mandatory, a mandatory fine imposed. Um, I'm just not as familiar with the dog at, running at large state statute. Uh, but I certainly could, that's something that I could make sure that, if that's a requirement.
Well, this is a first read, so perhaps we can put that
If you can get it corrected by the time it gets to the public hearing, I'm happy with it, but.
See, my
Go ahead, Finley.
My concern isn't so much the dog at large, because I'm sure, like, you know, that they'll, you know, they try and work with, yeah, you got a young dog who's trying to, you're figuring it out. He breaks free, your kids are young, they let him out the door, those type of things. But my concern's always been of, of the investment we have in licensing these animals. And, uh, and is it safe to assume that's in a different code? That's not part of this? Because it's something, I don't, I don't push the cause anymore because I never have any support. But the, the licensing of the dog is a huge waste of time. It's a waste of time for our police department. It's a waste of time for the town clerk's office. And the reason they know about you for the fifteen time is because you've done the responsible thing and gotten your dog vaccinated for rabies and the shots that they need with a vet, and the vet notifies the state, and the state tells the town, and we tell you, "Come on, give up your ten bucks, or we're gonna fine you thirty-five and send officers to your house and everything else." So that's my beef. It's not so much the dog at large, um, although the numbers, it might be better to see what is there.
The one thing with the dog licensing, though, if I may, I'm sorry, um, is it helps our animal control officer find the owner of the dog. Um, so if there's one benefit to it, that, that definitely is, because we're able to, um, you know, track by street, by dog, by type of dog, by person. So that is one benefit of it.
It is. It's, no, and I can appreciate it. It's, it's the whole other component. And it is, it's time-consuming and, and, uh,
Peter has, Peter has something.
Don't be speaking like a police officer now.
Thank you, Finley. Um, I agree with the chief, though. Having the, having the, the tags, this is two parts to this. So having the tags, um, are important. It helps everybody find their dog, get the dog. And why you wouldn't do it, I don't understand, because I, my dog, I get the tag on it, you know. But having overseen our ACO and officers chasing them and going through that process, and, you know, God forbid we, you know, I've watched these folks, and we send out a letter, and the, the animal's deceased, and they get upset, and they call, and you've writ, just brought me back to a sad memory and things like that, and, you know. Um, and some people have left town, and now they're getting letters forwarded to them, and they're like, why am I still getting? So, and, you know, we chase it down, and I agree with you. I think that, uh, sometimes it's really, we're not getting the bang for the buck. You know, so I follow you on that.
That's, boy.
I, you know.
There's two of us, but that's still not enough.
Think about how we approach it, I guess.
You do have another dog owner over here as well, just, yeah, for, for the record, so.
Is that what you call yourself, just a dog owner?
Dogs owner in the plural. But, no, I, I, I don't, I don't mind taking, I don't, I don't mind licensing my dogs. I, I really don't. I think it's important. I mean, uh, having, having two dogs that have been placed into protective custody by the Merrimack Police Department, very grateful to get a phone call that will say, "Mr. Boyd, we have Adidas." They're like, "Okay, I gotta fix a hole in the fence." And I, and I appreciate that. You know, I look at this as, you know, you know, old, old man Smith, for lack of a better term, was, you know, the dog continually escapes and is just, you know, wreaking havoc throughout the whole neighborhood. That's, to me, it's, it's, I think, for the most part, I, I like to believe that everybody that lives in Merrimack are responsible dog owners. It's just unfortunately, there are, in our community, we do have a couple of chuckleheads that just don't, don't have the level of responsibility like, like most of us do. And I think that's sparing the intent behind this.
And, and if I recall right, it always came down to, there was about maybe thirty people that they really had to track down, and then they ended up summoned and making the notice to come to court, you know, so, really.
It's a record this year, we had four.
Four, okay.
We have a great animal control officer.
Jackie?
I think, it has been mentioned a few times, but I think it's a very key thing, that it, it makes the dog owner vaccinate the dog.
That's why you got caught, though, cause you already did that. That's the point.
And, and that's important when people do get bit.
Oh, no, truly.
So I, I think that's a, a very vital part of it. And for doggy daycare, you know, that, it's needed anyway, so.
Okay, all set?
And I'm sure I'd move chapter one nineteen to a public hearing.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by
Second.
Peter Albert.
With the understanding that With the understanding that Chief Roy's gonna look into the one nineteen five before it gets there. it gets there. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Nothing. Seven, zero, zero. Chapter 128.
Chapter 128, we'd like to add the following underneath Horse Hill Nature Preserve: Target shooting, in the broad sense, the firing of rifles, pistols, air guns, and shotguns for sport, together with sports archery, and when used in conjunction with specific targets typically used to develop accuracy. Underneath definitions.
In the broad sense is okay? I just seem to loosen it up a little. I don't know.
So...
We were trying not to make it too strict.
Right.
Sports archery, that's a bow and an arrow. Do we consider that a firearm?
My question is, what is a firearm?
So, because the whole thing talks about firearms prohibited, and yet you're including archery in the context of the conversation, and I don't find that compatible.
Well, I, I, I think you go by the law, and, you know, they specifically separate bow hunting season from musket from rifle, so I, I think that that's the answer to the question. Target, I mean, arrow, yeah.
Which means we have to finish, because I don't understand what's the answer to the question.
Exactly. You're exact, I'm the same, but...
The statute, section 128 hyphen 1, authority, the town has prohibited target shooting with firearms. It's very clear. You're saying you cannot use, you cannot use a rifle or a gun. It's not saying we're prohibiting target shooting using a bow and an arrow. We're saying a firearm. So why are we including sports archery within the context of the chapter? If you want to include it, then you need to rewrite, you need to rewrite the authority, and you probably would have to come up with a new section regarding target shooting with, with bow and arrow prohibited. You'd have to include that language.
Yeah, the, what our thought process behind this was, people who have, and I'm not sure how that's defined, I guess, the, the bow and arrow, the crossbow that they use that has the actual trigger mechanism in it, that they use for target shooting, sometimes you'll see those, those very large targets. So we wanted to prohibit that too, but you're right, we have to define exactly which ones we were talking about, because it does, it does just say firearms and the authority and target shooting, so. But we, what happens is people will argue about what exactly is target shooting. Oh, I'm just out here shooting like that. I'm not target shooting. But they're shooting at cans, or they're shooting at bottles, so...
That's what that...
Correct.
But they do allow hunting, right?
Yes.
On that property? They don't, there's no hunting?
They do. There's no hunting on Horse Hill?
On Horse Hill, I don't think you can.
No, not on Horse Hill.
In Horse Hill?
You can't hunt on Horse Hill?
I don't believe so.
I haven't passed people...
I thought hunting, I always thought that was, you could hunt on that property. Remember, that's what, it's kind of a contradiction for me.
Well, except for the, I'll have to check. I always thought it was allowed. I'm not a hunter, so I've never had a need to...
Some of the...
I hear guns out there. There's no doubt about that.
But the difference, the difference is hunting season is a specific timeframe, where target shooting, if you're doing that, you're doing it whenever you want to do it, and that's, and we had those problems, you know, signing up. That's, that's my fault. Hunting, I hesitate. If it's, if it's not allowed, I'm surprised. If it is allowed, I'd hesitate to shut it off, because, you know, it's just a large parcel of land, and...
I think that was part of that whole debate about when we purchased it.
And hunting, you're liable to hear a couple of shots at a time, whereas target shooting, you might hear shots for half an hour, 45 minutes.
Right, sure.
Or more.
So those, we will clean up those different and clarify.
I think it's the same as the other, yeah, just a quick...
Right, so that can be reviewed and clarified during the public hearing, Denise?
Yes.
I should call you chief, not Denise.
I asked her, she said it was okay either way.
My name is, my name is still Denise. They didn't change it.
Okay, any other questions related to this?
One of the new counselors have to call her chief.
Sorry. Welcome aboard.
You can call me Tom.
First night, quarter of 11. That's great. Thanks, Tom.
I thought there was, because there was a whole debate about when we purchased it, and there was, wanted to debate it later about making it not hunting, and there was a whole discussion of a lot of people...
I'll have my resident hunting expert come.
We just found it.
Move chapter 128 to a public hearing with the changes that Chief Roy will be making.
Okay, second? Bill Rathhouse? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody paying attention?
No.
Sorry, I missed that.
All those in favor say aye. There we are. So don't talk to me about being late. Okay, chapter 181, here we are.
As you remember, we had some discussion, this chapter is regarding the special event management, and there was some discussion by the council about deeming necessary to get those temporary non-parking signs out and about without council approval. So we added language, we added 181-4, emergency exceptions. After consultation and when deemed necessary by the chief of police or fire chief, director of public works, and the town manager, whether during an emergency conditions or otherwise, shall temporarily allow for specific traffic, parking, and pedestrian exceptions until such time the town council may be afforded the opportunity to vote on a traffic and special event management, not pan, but plan, if applicable.
Just pointing out the opportunity and pan. That's all.
Thanks, Bill. We will make those changes. I, I actually have those noted too, but we'll make those changes.
We have autocorrects on it.
I think it's perfect.
I hate to throw people under the bus, but it wasn't me this time.
I've checked, give you some autocorrect.
Management pan.
For consistency, could we say the police chief and the fire chief, as opposed to the chief of police and the fire chief?
I actually made that note.
Any other? Big motion?
Madam Chair, move chapter 181 to a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
John Thornton. Second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, sir.
I see the wingnuts are kicking over.
Happens after 10 o'clock every time.
Okay.
This isn't budgetary, right?
It's all in the beginning. Okay, approve the minutes for the following town council meetings, October 26, 2017.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, October 26, 2017 town council meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by...
Second.
Peter Albert. Any changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Bill.
No, I had none, but I think Tom.
Okay, Tom Koenig.
On the first page on line 35, it says, "In response to some of the discussions had after the last meeting regarding formal organization..."
Take out "had."
Yeah. That would probably be easier to read than that. Just remove a "had."
"After the last meeting regarding..."
Yeah. And then on page 18, the second line, it reads from the first line, "Any other warrants it could result in a likability for the town?"
I'm sorry, what's, what line, I'm sorry?
Line two.
Okay.
"Results in a likability for the town," probably should read, "Results in a liability for the town."
What, I'm sorry, what line was that?
Two?
Two.
Liability.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
That was all I found on that one. Thank you.
Any other changes? Okay, motion made and seconded. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven, zero, one, for abstention.
Six, zero, one.
All at once.
Six, zero, one.
You think it's easy time, right? That's why I won't be in this seat in April. Okay.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, November 2, 2017 town council meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by...
Second.
Peter Albert. Corrections, changes. Finley?
Page one, line 14, it doesn't say anything about how the echoing that was happening during the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor, Counselor Boyd, we've learned that you can't do the Pledge of Allegiance over the phone, because there's a delay.
There's a delay.
And, and my dear chairman couldn't contain herself.
Oh, check about throwing me under the bus.
Yeah, really?
I was not the only one.
No, you weren't. So don't do it next time.
Now we know.
Any, any other? Go ahead.
I'm drawing a blank, but on seven of 17, at line 17, it says, "The motion made by Counselor Koenig and seconded by Counselor Albert to approve with gratitude the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $150." I don't recall if I did it. I don't typically add the "with gratitude" into, into my verbiage, although I probably should. Does anybody have any more memory of that than me? Was, was it I that did that motion, or?
I have no idea, Tom.
For the, for the donation?
The $150 donation, yeah. I might have, but...
You might have. The "with gratitude" may have been mentioned by somebody else, and it was thrown in on the phone and attributed to you.
Peter might have sat in with that.
I might have said, maybe it was just accidentally attributed to me, and I just thought I'd ask. I don't care. It's fine.
Yeah, that might have been what happened.
Yeah.
On line, on page 10, the vote is wrong. At line 41, I think the ayes were Counselor Koenig and Counselor Albert, and I believe Counselor Harrington was a nay, causing that to be a 3-2 failure, as the next statement on line 45 says.
You're right.
Yep, that's correct.
So yay was Counselor Koenig and Counselor Albert, the nays were Counselor Flood, Counselor Boyd, and Counselor Harrington. So it's two, three, and that did not pass as a result. That's correct.
Right. And then I just wanted to make a comment on lines 32 through 38 of page 11. This has nothing to do with our agenda items or anything, so I think this was just some data that suddenly came in that Eileen wanted to share about the tax rate. So it's not marked in here in any way. It looks like it's part of one of the agenda discussions or something. It's really a kind of an out and board comment that was made. I don't know how that should be handled, or whether it really matters, but...
I remember that, because that's when I came to the meeting.
Correct.
And I passed over the thing. I think what she wanted to do was to include it in her town manager's report as part, extend her town manager's report and discuss it during her, but it wasn't here in time when she did her town manager's report.
Could we say town manager, report addendum, or something? I don't know.
But I believe that's what it was about, because I remember signing her paper, paper, and I came in to a meeting right around that time.
I remember that, and so that's why I thought it was interesting when I saw it in there.
Yeah, I think it was part of, it was supposed, addition to her town manager's report.
Okay, you could just put a title in there that just says addition to town manager's report.
I'm sorry, so do you think, do you think labeling it that would be sufficient?
I think that would be fine with me. I just, rather than have it just sitting there as kind of a floating paragraph.
So prior to line 32, put in a identification, town manager's report addendum.
That would work for me. Thank you.
Madam Chair, page 10, line 28. The word "moton" should be motion.
Just read right through that, just right there.
Oh, me, of course, of course.
You know what you want to say. Any others?
That's it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Move to accept with revisions or corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, six, zero, one. Tom Thornton abstaining. We do have the chief of fire department here, Chief Curry, and it appears that he wants to say nothing to us, so I'm going to give him that privilege. Go right ahead, chief.
This is in reference to Jill Longvall's presentation of the hazardous collection that she indicated, so when it comes to the minutes, they'll know what that's from, referencing back. She indicated that the, to the public, that if they have some unknown hazardous materials, that call the fire department, and then that was kind of brushed over relatively quickly. That is very, I stay here because I think that is a very important topic that needs to be brought up. I, I mean, very important topic, that if, if you have something that's unknown, and it's a hazardous material at your residence, I'm not talking about old paint, old latex paint, I, I want to just bring up to the citizens that anything that may be in a amber colored jar, Jill did indicate, anything that has crystals forming on the outside of that jar, that can be very hazardous materials. Any type of acids, picric acid, crystalline acids, that form crystalline on the exterior of a container can actually be explosive. So, and I don't want to make anybody afraid of stuff like that, but I, I thought it was important to clarify what she was saying here, that, you know, paints, thinners, and stuff like that, that are flammable, not an issue. Put them in your car, you can take them somewhere. If you have a container that has no label, that's been in your barn, or you moved into a place that has a barn, and it's been in there for longer than your grandfather's been around, those are something maybe you need to call the fire department for. We have the technicians on staff. I can come down, and we can give you an identification of, of what has to happen to that material, and how to handle it properly. She did indicate that they had some issues at the collection days. There were some issues that I've been aware of through Nashville Fire, that there were items delivered that they actually had to call a bomb squad for. Okay, so I, I don't want to play this down, but I don't want to play it up too much. You have a fire department that's qualified and trained to identify these materials. He can give you advice. If you're really at a point where you don't know when it's been around for a while, it's easy to make a call, and we can send somebody out, and it'll take us five to 10 minutes to identify what you have. If it takes us longer than five, then we're going to have to call in help. Okay? But I, I thought it was important enough for me to stay here and bring that up, that people need to be aware that i-if it's unknown, and you've had it around for a long time, give us a call. We'll come out and look at it. Please.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's a very good point.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, comments from the press. Can you pass that to Paul? Seeing none. Comments from the public, also seeing none. Comments from the council. Seeing none. Oh, Finley?
Welcome, Tom Thornton.
Ah.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, I might, I might do some shifting of the chairs.
You mean another wire, is that what you said?
Yeah, it looks like already. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Bill Boyd, seconded by...
Motion to adjourn, Tom Thornton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one, no one would dare. Seven, zero, zero. Yes, it has been done. Good night.